Welcome, everybody, to our December 5th City Commission Work Session. We will call this meeting to order, and if you will please join me as Jennifer leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and to the Republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, well, just to let folks know, we're going to be changing our agenda around just a little bit. We'll go through presentations, consent agenda, and such, and then when we get to action items, we're going to move the Marina item first. The vendor that is, the proposed vendor, has a time crunch and needs to do it earlier in the day, so I just want to let anybody here that's here for that know that. All right, we'll move on to presentations. We have Intergenerational Week proclamation. I will turn that over to Commissioner Gao.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Intergenerational Week, what a wonderful, actually, every day should be Intergenerational Week in Dunedin as we move to live, work, play in Dunedin and make it available for everybody from cradle to grave, so to speak. Sorry about that, it's the only thing I could come up with. But Brett, Cindy, thank you guys for coming this morning. We're glad you're here. Let's read the Intergenerational Week proclamation. Intergenerational Week 2023. Whereas there are patterns to everything in life, the young and the elderly live and play in increasingly different worlds, and the young often find little opportunity for meaningful exchanges with senior adults. And whereas understanding and communication between generations within families, neighborhoods, and communities are critical to meeting individual needs and community challenges. And whereas both young and old have common basic human needs: to feel love and compassion, to be intellectually stimulated, to develop self-esteem, to maintain links between the past and the future, to feel purposeful, to enjoy meaningful relationships, to have a sense of place in society, and to feel competent, worthwhile, and affirmed. And whereas a truly healthful society must be built upon a sense of respect for the perceptions and experiences of all of its citizens, and the joys of joining together and celebrating differences, as well as similarities. And whereas the main goal of Intergenerational Week is to encourage intergenerational bonding on an ongoing basis, to help our youth understand the needs of our elders, and to make an extra effort to engage them in meaningful activities throughout the year, fostering mutual respect, companionship, appreciation, admiration, and a sense of responsibility and belonging. Now therefore, I, Jeff Gao, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the City of Dunedin, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim Sunday, December 3rd, through Saturday, December 9th, as Intergenerational Week 2023 in Dunedin, and encourage all citizens to promote intergenerational understanding and acceptance by participating in events such as Intergenerational Drum Circle at the Hale Center with San Jose Elementary After School Program, Preschool Power Hour at Dunedin Public Library, Zumba with the Youth Advisory Committee at the Community Center, golfing at Dunedin Sterling Park and Driving Range, and lastly, reading submissions from the Committee on Aging's My Favorite Older Person Essay Contest. So, thank you all.
Well, thank you for letting us come up here, and thank you for the proclamation. In January 11, we will be presenting the three awards to the three winners of the essay, and Carrie will be here, and she is area of aging. And she will be giving a gift certificate. Hard write?
Exactly.
Yeah, and we'll have a little certificate too, from them, to them, and thank you for doing that. And I just want to tell you that I'm very happy and excited to be working with our new recreation coordinator at the Hale Center, and we are planning on having more young children, middle-aged plus, and older adults to come together all year long. We're going to plan activities that we all come together at all ages, and I'm looking forward to going tomorrow to Zumba with all the kids. Kara has a beautiful video of the drum circle yesterday with the children, with teenagers and older adults. It's very beautiful. I wish we could have put it up here for you all to see, but we have that, and just thank you so much. You want to say anything?
Yes, and my name is Carrie Kimball-Marcello, and I'm so delighted to be here this morning. The work of the City of Dunedin and the Dunedin Committee on Aging is so impressive, and it has been for years, and it's truly a testament to your dedication in serving the older adults in Dunedin. And so, we're delighted to be a part of this process, and we have been for many years. And though our executive director, Anne Marie Winter, was unable to be here this morning, she said it's one of her most favorite things to do throughout the year, so she looks forward to being here on January 11th, so thank you.
Well, that's awesome, and I want to also extend a big welcome to Brett, our new Hale Center Director, so we're very excited to have you as well. I got to meet you at the Christmas party.
Yeah.
But thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of our seniors and all the generations in the community. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, let's do pictures.
Yep, come on up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that a gator on the back of your phone, I see?
It's Taylor Swift.
Oh, it's an orange phone, and it looked like a gator to me, and I was going to let go, "Gators." You know, I just had to rub it in.
I was waiting for it.
Had to rub it in.
I was waiting for it. It's okay, we got burned once this week, we can do it again. But Mayor, real quickly, just wanted to say that yesterday, or Sunday, I attended the Community Chorus Concert, which is primarily made up of seniors in our community, not that it's only seniors, so everybody can join. But what was really wonderful was after the concert, the number of those seniors, those grandparents, that were standing with their grandchildren, getting their pictures taken around Christmas trees and things of that nature, and just the fact that to see the smile on the grandchildren's face of the pride they felt in their grandparents, singing and enjoying their hobbies and stuff, it was just, it was a wonderful sight.
Very cool. You got to go too, didn't you?
I did go.
You took your mom?
Yeah, oh yeah. She actually has a couple friends in there now from Me's Life, which is awesome. But I did want to say, when you go historically back to all the great stuff that Community on Aging has done, and our staff, it's been great, but what I love is that I think what it helps develop is things happen organically in Dunedin, you know, and my favorite thing that happened organically was the golf cart parades going through the horseshoe turn at Me's Life. And like, now that my mother's there, I know, like, it's on their calendar, it's like a big event, and they know it's December 16th, they know when they're coming through, they're all out there. So, I mean, you know, things happen organically, but it really stems, I think, historically from that passion that comes out of our staff and comes out of our Committee on Aging.
Yeah, comes out of your partner, Peg.
Yeah, well, she had a lot to do with it historically, she did so much.
Hi, Peg. We know you're watching.
Yeah.
She had a lot to do with that, so that's a pretty rock star move.
She did, but it's a great part of our community, so.
Citizen input, is, now is the time for anybody that wishes to speak on any item that is not already on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we'll invite you up at the time we discuss it. Anyone? Okay. We'll go to consent agenda. We've got a lot of things on consent agenda. We've got the minutes from October 3rd, 5th, 17th, and 19th. We have board committee, board and committee appointments to the Board of Adjustment and Appeal, Disability Advisory Committee, Firefighters Pension, the LPA, Public Safety, Stormwater, and Military Advisory Committee, as well as we have a contract or service task assignment in the amount of $52,000 for the Washington Street Drainage Improvements. Thank you, Jorge. And the award of bid for Country Lane Under Drain Replacement for $168,000. Are there any items to be pulled?
Mayor, can I pull 2D?
2D, the local planning agency?
Yeah, 2D, yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else to be pulled? All right, so can I have a motion to approve all items except item D?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Twunga and Commissioner Walker, is there any public input on these items of consent? Seeing or hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Jorge, will you let that guy know what we're doing? All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, item D, did you just have a quick question, Jeff?
Just, actually, just a real brief conversation about what it is. It's a high-dollar amount, and it really goes to the infrastructure of Dunedin and what we do, and so I always like it when those things are really made public.
Item D is the local planning agency.
He meant County Lane.
I'm the county line.
I am, so sorry.
2D.
Okay, well, I announced it completely incorrectly. I was looking, yeah, he just said D, and I looked at D, and D was under the appointments for boards and committees, so I completely said it incorrectly.
You just said the title incorrectly, the item was correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you said 2D.
Sorry. Okay, so, are you clear?
I am.
All right. Go ahead, we will go down to item 2D, the Country Lane Under Drain Replacement. Is that the one?
Yes.
Go.
So, Mayor, if I may, Mary Sheets, our city engineer, can give you an overview of the project, and Commissioner Gao, I did my best yesterday to explain to Commissioner Gao what under drain is, but I cannot be as descriptive as our city engineers, so.
Do you want a whole presentation, or you just have a question?
No, no, just a conversation, I guess, just an overview.
Right.
I mean, it's pretty impressive what we do, and for the dollar amount, I just thought the public would need to know.
Okay.
Maybe before you should try to explain the under drain, just to see how much the city manager, and then Mary can.
Mine would be very brief.
Hey, Jorge, payback. Payback, baby. Okay, shoot.
Good morning, Mary Sheets, city engineer. This project is to provide drainage improvements for the Washington Street from Broadway, alternate 19, to 150 feet west of Broadway. Under drain.
Mary, this is 2D, which is County Lane. Yeah. She knows both of them, so.
Country Lane, under drain replacement.
Country Lane, sorry. That's all right, under drain.
We're, we just didn't get our coffee early enough. Her and I are both on the same page, not getting the right item.
Okay, now for the ride project. This project is to have the, the existing under drain has failed. Under drain is what draws the water down in the water table, so that it reduces flooding along the streets. Where they allow for yard sediment and other materials that have clogged the under drain, so it has to be replaced. An eight-inch PVC pipe is being placed parallel to the current under drain system, and stubouts to the properties are included. Do you have specific questions?
Yeah, but what does that mean?
It means that when it rains a lot, and the yards get full of water, and it goes out into the street, the under drain kind of like sucks it up underneath, and then transports it to the actual drainage system.
Okay, no, thank you, that was it.
That was good. Any other questions?
Yeah, so that's gravity flow?
Yeah, just gravity flow, you're correct.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? All right, can I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Commissioner Gao and Commissioner Frainey, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we're going to action items, and we're going to move the item 3E, which is Dunedin Marina and Associated Public Facility Master Plan Consulting Services forward. We're going to be going on to Zoom, where Kim Lee Horn and associates will be there available for questions about the RFQ and their response. Just remembering, Jennifer, can you give us an update as to, welcome, James and Casey, just give us a couple minutes. Jennifer, can you give us an update as to what we've done so far?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, and staff will provide a little bit more detail, but just to kind of give an overview of where we are right now, we've been talking about the Marina Master Plan as it pertains to the basin itself and associated public facilities for a number of years, both as part of our business planning process and our budgeting process. This year, we allocated $100,000 for, essentially, the development of the Marina Master Plan. It's a large project. It, we developed the scope, and actually conferred with the Marina Advisory Committee regarding the scope. We brought the scope to the City Commission on July 11th of this year, which is very unusual to bring a scope of services to the City Commission. Typically, we, staff develops it, and then we put it out in the street for a response. The City Commission, as I recall, was pleased with the scope of services, it's very comprehensive as far as the detail of the proposal, or what we were looking for specifically. We did have three proposers, I believe, three responses. We had a committee made up of three people, and that was Laney Sheets and Mary Sheets? Wow, okay, that's cool. I didn't think about that.
Didn't put that together, huh?
Yeah, I didn't, and Lori Ferguson as well, reviewed the three, and Kim Lee Horn was the most responsive and responsible proposal, we found, and so as a result, they, all three of them rated Kim Lee Horn as their first choice for responder to the proposal. And with that, Mayor, I'm going to hand it over to Vince, who's going to elaborate, and then Sheedy, and Laney, who's going to elaborate a little bit more.
Okay, hang on one second. So, the purpose of today is simply to approve the award of bid?
Of the proposal.
Of the proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Vince?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners. Just, I'm going to just reiterate a little bit of what Jennifer said. At the July 11, 2023, Commission meeting, staff received consensus direction and approval of the scope of services for the Marina Master Plan. Funds were included in fiscal year 2023 budget to hire a qualified consultant to develop the master plan. Staff presented the scope of services to the Marina Advisory Committee, as well as City Commission at the July 11 City Commission Workshop, as I previously mentioned. Upon receiving consensus direction, staff sought solicitation for consulting services through the Request for Proposal process. Laney Sheets Administration, Administrative Superintendent for the Parks and Recreation Department has led this effort, and will be presenting this morning. Lori Ferguson, our City Harbor Master, and Mary Sheets, city engineer, who are both part of this process, are here this morning to answer any questions as needed. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Laney to present.
Welcome, Laney. Thank you, good morning. As Vince mentioned, we put out the request for qualifications. The proposals were due in September on the 26th. As the city manager mentioned, we had three submittals. The team, myself, Mary, and Lori all felt like, and no relation, by the way, the, all the proposals were very good, qualified applicants, so we were very pleased with the submittals, and we felt like through the request for qualification process, if there is not a clear-cut standout amongst those, that we can then ask the firms to come in and give in-person interviews, and so that we were able to get a better understanding of the qualifications of the firm, their suggested, proposed process that they would go through to go through this evaluation and develop the master plan. We had those in-person interviews, and after that process, all three of us on the team reranked the firms based on their initial submittals and the in-person interviews, and all three of us were unanimous in ranking Kim Lee Horn as our number-one choice, as the firm that we felt like would be the most appropriate and best qualified to do the scope of work. This recommendation was based on a number of different factors that they exhibited through that process, and as you can see, we have both James and Casey on the Zoom today, to be able to introduce themselves to you all as well, and you all to ask them any questions that you may have. But number one, we really felt like they had an understanding of Dunedin. They have a long history of doing work for Dunedin in various different aspects around the city, and different master plans, and they really understood who we are as a community, and the specific uniqueness of Dunedin, and the involvement of our community. And they really were very accommodating in that aspect. Secondly, they had a, we felt like the best understanding of the project. They have a lot of experience in doing similar-type work with different waterfronts, not only with marinas, but with, you know, waterfront projects that are associated with public parks and public facilities, because we know that the Marina is more than just the slips alone, and they really demonstrated that understanding of the continuity that has to happen within the entire downtown area. As I mentioned, they've done very similar work, most notably with the City of Cape Coral, and their facility down there, it got thrown a curveball with the hurricane, but they had developed a master plan, and they have very similar aspects with the Marina, the park, they have public meeting spaces, et cetera, that all have to, you know, work in continuity with each other, and they really understood the uniqueness of that. We really appreciated the expertise of the team, not only in their ability to, with James's experience in working with public facilities, but with Casey's specific experience in Marina work. And he had a very long list of every aspect of seawalls, piers, bulkheads, marinas, and understanding the uniqueness of that particular environment, and really felt like that that was critical in this project. They demonstrated a great ability for their ability to do community engagement. They have staff that are specific to that particular aspect, and we know that this will have a great deal of community engagement. So, after we ranked them, number one, we go into the scope and fee proposal portion of the process, and we worked back and forth with Kim Lee Horn to make sure that their proposal to the city met all of our needs. And so, we expect this to be about a six-month process, going, you know, probably starting, kicking off after the holidays, but we wanted to get this contract awarded before then, so we can hit the ground running with the New Year. It'll start with a complete tour and analysis of our existing facilities. We will then move into, and probably simultaneous, work with them to do an initial online survey of our Marina and the public facilities associated with this. This will give them the baseline to find out what the community wants and needs are, and what their expectations, what their perceptions are, so they can kind of start to formulate some different proposals and plans. They will also, during that same timeline, have various stakeholder meetings, we'll be working with them to set those up, and that'll give them the more in-depth and specific knowledge of our specific user groups, our sailing groups, our sliprunners, et cetera. And our, so, after that, and they get all of the technical data, the input from the community, the input from our user groups, they will then work to develop three different quote-unquote options for master plans. And what we've worked with them to do is, is we get kind of what I'm calling the small, medium, and large versions. We don't want to just develop one grandiose master plan that just puts things in three different places. We want to have options on how much or little we can bite off and chew, and be able to do. So, they will be giving us, here's the baseline of what you can do, to make sure you just continue to offer the same services you're offering now, and maybe there are some improvements you can do, maybe moving things around, maybe adding additional amenities, and then maybe it's the pie in the sky, you know, this is the ultimate, you know, goal. So, they'll be giving those to us, to be able to then present to the community, and we'll have a community meeting to discuss the various options, and see what they like, what they don't like, and we'll have the cost estimates associated with that. Once we go through those community meetings, and we've now had, you know, the initial analysis, the stakeholder meetings, the community meetings, we will then schedule a workshop with the City Commission to be able to present all of that information to you, and give you all the input of what all of those surveys and feedback have been, and hopefully, at that time, you'll be able to answer all, ask all your questions on the different master plan options, and hopefully, we come out of that with some sort of consensus direction on which way to go with the master plan. They'll also be presenting various options within the basin itself, as far as the different types of docks, the different configurations of docks, et cetera. Once we have consensus direction, we have scheduled in the process to be able to go back to the community and get their final input, so an additional community meeting, and then a final meeting back with the City Commission after all of that. So, we have two community meetings through the process scheduled, and then two City Commission meetings. One at the, we're at various options, and then once we, again, when we finalize down to what the official adopted plan will be. In your packet, and as mentioned, the proposal, again, we'll go over the docks, the piers, the buildings especially, the Harbor Master Building, the boat ramp, they will take into consideration both vehicle and pedestrian circulation, they understand that, you know, we have an adjacent park, and all of that needs to be taken into account, again, the various dock types and layouts, and again, also the cost estimates with the various plans. So, that's the overview, and at this time, I would like to turn it over to James and Casey for them to be able to introduce themselves.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Hi, good morning, thank you, Laney.
Okay, we can't hear you, you've got to unmute yourself there.
He is.
Yeah, I see that, we still can't hear. We still can't hear you. I'm looking for our technical people in the back room.
Still can't hear me?
Yeah, got you now. There you go.
Oh, great. Good morning. Thank you for the review there, Laney, and the introduction. My name is James Bankton with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I lead our landscape architecture and planning practice here in the Sarasota office. I've been in the market area here for about 20 years. As Laney said, we've got a lot of, I think, relevant experience and happy to answer any questions, but look forward to any feedback or questions that you may have for us. Casey?
Hi, good afternoon, or good morning, actually.
Good morning.
Casey along with Kim Lee Horn as well. I bring with me 27 years of experience doing marine structural engineering, both on seaports as well as on, in commercial marinas and also even in the residential side, doing inspections as well as layouts. And so my role on this project will be more on the waterside, working with the Harbor Master and planning staff to come up with the best alternatives within the waterside.
Well, thank you very much. Anything else? Anything from you, ladies? Anything from you, Jennifer? Okay. All right. So any questions on the Award of Proposal? We'll start with you, Vice Mayor. Go right ahead.
So you're asking about the award. You mean, do we have any questions of them as, from their presentation they just made? I assume that's what you...
Yeah, what's on the agenda.
Thank you. Just wanted for clarification. So the award, the award, I understand the award. I just want to make sure a couple of things or that I have input on a couple of things before it begins. I'm sure that they have, they have been made aware of everything from all the charrettes that we've had in the past. We have spent lots of time on this process and have really done nothing of moving forward, but it exists. And so whether it's of any value or not, I'm sure that they would at least dig into that and know about that.
Yeah, if I can answer your question, we've already started the process of giving them a lot of data. So we've already been sharing with them not only as-built plans that we have for the infrastructure, but also the previous master plans, the waterfront task force recommendations that sort of, we've been data dumping to Kim Lee Horn, so they have all that information.
And I don't mean this negative, but we've had a couple stutter steps, and we've spent some money on this process, not on the process, on the actual docks before. And so that's okay, but just make sure that they have access to that if you don't mind. I'm sure you will. I had read in the documentation, and maybe I misunderstood this, but it sounded like everything was going to be above water that they were working on, but they'll have technical access to the information that we have under the water. So for example, our new seawalls or relatively new seawalls and that kind of a thing, and they'll take that into consideration. I'm sure you will, because you guys are experts at this, correct? And you'd want to know that part of it first.
Yes, as well as the piling report that was done this past May. And so we provided that information to them, and they can speak on this, but they felt confident in their ability to do the analysis based on the data that existed.
Is it going to be limited, was the scope limited to above water?
No, that was their proposal back on what they felt like was required to do the analysis. And I, James, you can, or Casey, you can speak on that.
Yeah, I'll touch on that. We did receive all the information that you referenced and have been kind of sifting through that. We felt that, you know, given the scope and the fee where we ended up, that with the information that we have and the analysis that Casey can do, which he'll speak to in a moment, that from an above-surface level, we felt confident with the information that we had. Casey, I know you talked about getting in the water at select locations, so I'll let you speak to that and kind of the difference between that versus maybe a full-on underwater investigation and what these implications of that would be.
Right, thank you. There were some underwater investigations already done. What we've done with those type of documents in the past on other projects is we've reviewed them. We do our topside investigations, looking at the conditions of the piles. A lot of the piling you can see in the water, see above the water at low tide, the same with the walls. You can see some of the more substantial corrosion above the water. But we will be jumping in the water briefly. I might do it in a couple of locations where it was deemed bad in previous documentation, but also just to get some general understanding. If we were to do a more extensive underwater investigation, which we're doing at Cape Coral right now on their piling, it was a three-day investigation with video recording up and down every pile, was a $45,000 effort. I'm not saying it would be that high here, but one to two days in the water with divers and everything could be in the $20,000, $25,000 range, and didn't feel that it was worth spending city money right now without getting an investigation of it topside with some spot checks.
No, thank you very much, because obviously, obviously, you don't want to come with recommendations that don't hold to what's down there, what the base level is, but you have to, so you have to have some knowledge, and apparently you do, and you do have some of that access. So I just wanted to cover that. I wanted to, I wanted to say something about the stakeholder meetings, if I may, and there may be a question in this. There's two things that I'm concerned about. One is, I love the stakeholder meetings. Obviously, they're very, very important, and as long as they're broadly announced and everybody has an opportunity to be aware of them, and that's going to be our responsibility, I would guess, as well, to make sure that that happens. There was something about a survey going out, and I want to make sure that we don't, that we don't get you going down a road immediately with a survey. I'm not real confident on the survey. This is a complicated, in my opinion, not necessarily complicated, but there are four parts that have to be looked at here. Number one, we have our shoreline, our entire shoreline, and that's in the middle of our shoreline. So that's one part of it. Another part of it is our Parks and Recreation Department, because we have a lot of people that come down there and view and visit and may not understand the marina, and then we have marina users, obviously, and we want to have a great marina. I'm going to be a little, I want to make sure that the downtown part of us has an access, certainly, certainly to that whole issue. So it's, there's four different kind of stakeholder groups, or maybe more. You may find more, so I would challenge you to find more, make sure that we really do look at it, just way up, way up high level first and take a look at it, and we're not just addressing one person's needs or what have you.
Can I add to that, Commissioner?
You please.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I had on my little list, too, when I saw that in there, that I thought it would be appropriate to, especially the two businesses that are down there, you know, Bon Appetit and Waltz, you know, are directly connected. I mean, it's only two businesses, but maybe we just do say the business community. I don't disagree with you. Okay, go ahead.
Anyway, I just wanted, that survey thing, if you don't mind, just know that I'm a little critical of that as we do that. I'd rather see the people talking and hear the people talking, because I've heard the people talking a lot about this subject matter. So I want to make sure that you're getting, that you are getting great input from us and not a small group of people that are slinging things at you. You can probably get, as far as, for example, the marina, you can probably get 100% perfect information, because they'll probably all line up to try to give us information. We just have to make sure that they're aware of the fact that we're looking for that and that they have an access or an opportunity to give that. You talked about some of your experiences. Could you just list, for the sake of anyone that may be listening, some of the marinas, marina areas that you've done, and just some of the important things that you took from them or added to them or what have you?
Sure, absolutely. I'll start, Casey, then feel free to jump in. As Laney mentioned, maybe one of the most relevant ones is the Cape Coral Yacht Club that we're doing right now. It's a marina basin, and I think maybe, I can try to share my screen here, but it's a marina basin with a lot of Upland Park features, and so it's got a lot of very similar elements, if you're able to see my screen here. I don't know if anybody can confirm visuals of that.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay. So this is the master plan of it. This has evolved now. We're actually at about 95% construction documents, and we have these into the permitting agencies, and they are under review. But we included a number of day dock facilities here so that people boating down the river over here to the left can pull up at the day docks, use the restaurant, use the existing Upland, or the proposed, rather, Upland Park features, and, you know, grab gas, grab fuel, grab food, or spend a day at the park as well. Within the actual yacht basin here, these are all leasable live-aboard slips and slips that people who keep their boat there utilize. So we had a lot of close coordination with the city and their Harbor Master to make sure that we provided a slip matrix that kind of maximized the return on investment in terms of leasable area for different-sized vessels, et cetera. Part of this project also included relocating the boat ramp, which you see in the location here. Currently, the boat ramp is in this location, and so as people are coming into the park, they're stopping traffic and backing up and doing multi-point turns into the boat ramp, then launching the boat into the river. As you know, that can be challenging at times, given certain wind and wave conditions. So this is really a bottleneck to the site. So in order to clean this up, we shifted the boat ramp location to here, where it's much more protected and it's more inland. As part of doing that, what you don't see across the canal here, towards the bottom of the page, is the Adjacent Homeowners Association, the Redfish Homeowners Association. So we had a lot of involvement with them during the process to kind of demonstrate the traffic that would be here, the landscape buffering that we'll be providing to screen that boat ramp and the launching locations. So really a collaborative and, I think, really also transparent stakeholder engagement and master plan development process to land us on this point. Ultimately, the master plan here was approved by the City Council unanimously with support from the Redfish Association. Part of the process here in development of the master plan, which we also envisioned and have discussed with Laney, that we'll be providing for you as we develop the master plan, is associated 3D graphics that really just help to tell and kind of illustrate what we're doing. We feel that these graphics help you as commission understand what's being proposed, but then also help the stakeholders and the public understand the proposed changes and ultimately really buy into that design process and the proposed conditions. Casey, I'll let you touch on, maybe Utah on some of the other stuff. I'll just say that in addition to Cape Coral, I've done a number of day dock facilities that are associated with different parks, a number of fishing piers. This is a fishing pier at the Bradenton River Walk. We opened this back in 2012 and just completed Phase Two of it last year. These are the day docks at the Bradenton River Walk that tie into that. We had a large day dock marina facility at Baker Park down in Naples, so that's a bit of some of my other recent experience, but Casey, I'll let you maybe touch on Utah and whatever other marinas you'd like to discuss.
Yeah, and I don't have the slides you do, James, but this is the Utah marina, and although it isn't in Florida, it just shows the relevance of our marine experience. Surprisingly, to tell, I found out that they actually have marinas and a large amount of boating in Utah, and this is a facility on the border of Utah and Idaho, that the bottom marina is the existing marina, and they're wanting to expand it to twice the size, to about 350 slips. And there was a lot of interaction with the community. There's a big fishing community as well as a recreational community of boaters, and a lot of the connection with the community helped drive a lot of the solutions and decisions for the State Parks Department. Separately from Utah, back here in Florida, I've been involved in a lot of repair projects for marinas as well as investigations and also new marine facilities. One in particular is for a large developer in Jacksonville where we're converting an old power plant right along the St. John's River into a major multi-use facility, including residential and recreational, but it will also have a marina, and separately from that, it had a seawall replacement component to it, and I think we have a photo of that one, James, the last one on the...
I don't think I have that one now, Casey.
Thought it was that one, okay. We also do a lot of work for major developers for their small marinas, 40 and 50-slip marinas and smaller with floating docks, as well as with fixed docks, and getting involved with our large Parks Department as well, working on small park and waterfront boardwalks and walkways. The connectivity of people to the waterfront is a very important part to us. I'm a boater, James is a boater. We live in Florida because we love the water, and so figuring out the best way to share it with all the different residences, businesses, and tourism, to provide the best insight onto the waterfront is a very important passion of both of ours, and that's what we do in our waterfront development group.
And I'll just touch, too, that it seems like, you know, as we're doing these large waterfront projects, park projects, marina projects, and I think you kind of touched on it, the stakeholder group is very vested and interested in the site, and it's our job to really bring consensus among those stakeholders and build a plan that is reflective of that input. The process that Laney outlined in the beginning, one of the things that we talked about was making sure we had enough kind of feedback loops where we could gather information from stakeholders, from the public, develop ideas, and then come back and present those ideas for more feedback until we ultimately build consensus. So I think really the process that we've designed to allow for that, I think, will yield the best results here for this.
Can you tell me if Cape Coral was operated as a internal fund for them as a city?
So, yeah, so the live-boards and the people that lease within the marina basin here, they all pay directly to the city, and that's managed through the Harbor Master, which in this plan is here. Part of what they have also, the city owns, you know, the entire parcel here, and they actually lease out this restaurant, and so they get a portion of restaurant revenues above a certain amount on a monthly basis that goes back into the city coffers, and that's helped for ongoing maintenance activities, programming, repairs, et cetera.
So we call that an enterprise fund. I don't know what they call that. I assume they probably call that an enterprise fund as well. So it goes into the fund, whatever monies they recover from the use of that land or property.
Correct, yes.
I wanted to make another comment. Since we do have different stakeholders here, in one of the stakeholder groups, those are the people that may be putting their boat in our marina, and this is just my opinion now, the folks that do not have a boat in that marina, of course, as I mentioned before, are still stakeholders, because they would have the right to put their boat in there at an interesting rate, representing, again, the enterprise fund. And so that's what kind of makes us perhaps just a little unique, I don't know, but somebody has a right to do that. And so I think that's really very, very interesting for any coastal city. I had a, so you were going, you're talking about looking at the traffic, the traffic flow. I think you mentioned that, is that correct? That's one of the things you'll be looking at as a task?
Yeah, we had some good discussion about this, actually, in the interview, but this is the site or the aerial view of your existing marina. So just one of the things from an observational standpoint that stood out to me as we were visiting the site and just looking at the marina, is that, and you touched on it, you've got marina users, you've got boat ramp users, downtown restaurant users here and here, and then you've got the park users, but dividing, or kind of separating all of those uses is your existing traffic flow, where you've got trucks and trailers coming in, waiting to launch here, and then, you know, stacking up, I guess on a Saturday morning, it stacks up pretty far and really kind of cuts off the integration that you have between the park and the marina. And so I think studying that and how that may be potentially modified by maybe rerouting some of that traffic flow, I think, would be important for this kind of the long-term vision of the, of just integrating the park, the marina, the downtown, and all of the site context, kind of upland of the seawall, and creating views, creating, you know, pedestrian walking areas that can be enjoyed along the waterfront here and just making it feel a little more integrated. So yes, studying that traffic is part of, I think, definitely part of the process that we do.
You'll probably discover that there's lots of input about that and there's been lots of attention paid to that, although not much, but we need to do something about that. I'd also like to just challenge you to kind of zero, zero-base this, realize... Um, I'd also like to just challenge you to to kind of zero, zero base this, um, realizing what's there today, uh, and then making it, making it the best you can, even if even if something gives just a little bit.
Yeah.
I know, I know the marina is important to us as a as a coastal city as as anyone could imagine and very important to those that have a boat down in there. Um, the um, other thing that I wanted to ask you about is when you, and this is my last, I'm sorry, I'm taking a lot of time, um, but this is really important to me, that the um, the different configurations of of docks. Um, do you have somebody with a CAD CAM system or or how how do you go about getting the best view of of what that might look like from floating and or not, or stationary or or what have you?
Yeah, and I'll share, sorry. Um, I'll share a couple of slides here. This was, again, um, we did a number of different layouts for that Cape Coral Coral Marina working with the harbor harbor master. The the colored um, you know, diagrams that you see here represent different boat sizes and slip length. And we, I think we must have done a half a dozen or or 10 or so of these and just studied the the length you kind of see here, the um, the quantity of the size of boat. And then we, of course, correlated that back with leasable dollars that the harbor master had based on their their rates. But um, we did a number of these different studies and ultimately kind of, you know, that led us to the approved master plan that you have here that the harbor master bought into. Um, so we would lay that out in AutoCAD and um, um, develop those, that's different uh, slip matrix and size and how that equates to leasable area and then revenue for the marina. Casey, I don't know if you'd like to put a pin in that for?
And and yes, and thanks, James. And in in addition to that, we work closely with the harbor master. We know that you have lists of the different types of boats, um, how many are, you know, currently there, what lengths and sizes they are, but you also have wait lists as well. And taking those combinations and maybe even changing the matrix up a little, I I wish we had more slips capable of this size boat, um, is a lot of common things that we hear amongst the harbor masters. I know in Utah, they had a 450-person waiting list and they're only putting in 340 boats. And so figuring out the number of slips and the quantities and layouts uh, was really important to maximize their revenue. But um, here, um, it it could have something to do with configuration, just making some adjustments and rotating some of the of the dock orientations um, for for Dunedin, um, could gain you some more slips as well. Um, moving the boat ramp slightly one direction or another could gain some spaces as well. So we will do all that in CAD for sure and uh, work closely with community and harbor master on that.
So you have the capability of laying that out very, very quickly and you could tell, for example, uh, just how many you could get in in a very short time period? That's what you do?
That that is, that is correct. And we also can even look at your fairways and and alleyways um, to determine, you know, maybe they're oversized, they're too wide, um, but we'd like to understand why they're so wide. But um, narrowing up some fairways um, um, with certain types of boats, as you can see here in Cape Coral, um, the red boats on the bottom are the smallest boats and the green boats are the next size up. So that fairway was made a lot narrower for those two boats to maneuver, to make more room over on the north side there for the larger vessels, um, which they currently do not have slips for. And they were able to add in a lot of 50-foot vessels, um, and accommodate more live aboard um, because of that, um, by shifting and moving some smaller vessels closer to each other.
Sure, there's general criteria for the fairways, et cetera, so that's that's kind of easy to do and easy to look at if you have a CAD system like that.
Yes, sir.
Also, uh, last comment, uh, and sort of a question. So what's in our marina today, okay, may not be what is really the desire of the community at some point in time off into the future. That's the difficult, that's the difficult one to come up with. So what it is, what is asked for today may not be what what the desire may be in uh, in 10 years. Things happen in the marine industry, obviously. Uh, maneuverability of the of the of the air, of the of the boats has changed rather significantly. And then the type, you know, if it's all sailboats, it's one kind of a thing and uh, being able to turn around in a in a fairway, et cetera. So I appreciate you looking at it in in its totality. That was why I asked so many different questions. So please, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gao.
Well, I don't know that there's any other questions. Uh, yeah, just, and you probably, and this is probably more to Laney. But what was the timeframe on this?
We're looking at about six months, obviously. That's going to be a fluid process as we go through to make sure that we schedule the community meetings at the right date and time, your commission meetings, you know, and how those land in between after we get the results back. So we're looking at about that six-month process, but it may take, you know, seven or eight, you know, just depending on how things land. But we'll be working on that um, that exact schedule once we get this approved. Uh, we'll be sitting down to schedule a kickoff meeting and start to lay those 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 stakeholder meetings out, et cetera.
Okay, so we should all be done with this by mid-July or mid-summer?
End of summer, yes.
End of summer? Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Franny?
Um, and to that point, uh, because I had that question too on the timeline, um, I guess as city manager, when did we decide that we were the next set of rate increases were going to happen?
It's October 1st of next year.
Okay, so that, so we'll be in line. We should have a pretty good vision of where we're headed by then, which is really what we wanted and, but we don't want to dig a bigger hole, so to speak, with the rates either. Okay, good. Um, let me just kind of look at this. A lot of my stuff has been asked. Um, I I'm going to ask James and Casey, you know, what exactly are your roles specifically to the project? When I look at page seven of 10, you know, I'm I'm just trying to fit you into your roles.
Sure. Um, so I will serve as the project manager. Um, as part of that, obviously, I'll be at all the public meetings and um, and the stakeholder meetings, the the presentations to you all, um, as will Casey. My role, I think where we maybe start to separate a little bit is my, I would say specialty in in this project would be more visioning and master planning and developing that kind of integration between the marina and the site and how those things fit together. Um, and leading the the design and the graphics that I showed the examples of, developing those. Um, and then Casey's specialty really is the structural marina components, the seawall, the piers, pile assessments, um, the structural assessment of the existing infrastructure. And then we work together to really develop that master plan that that um, will be reflective of of the city's needs. Uh, Casey, feel free to uh, to expand on that from a structural standpoint.
Sure, yeah, and and as James said, I'd handle a lot of the structural assessments, including the building, but I also do the marina layouts and work on all the the fairways and the various layouts of the slips. And then I dabble a little on the land side with the boat ramp circulation and other things and integrated together, James and I collectively cover all the holes um, in the planning process. We do have a team of people we work with, but um, James and I tend to work on these types of projects ourselves.
So when I look at the, you know, the layout of, you know, I see the senior project manager, I see a chief engineer, I see landscape architect, a lot of the big hours are in that. But we're, you're the senior project manager, James?
That's correct. And then Casey would be the chief engineer. And then a lot of the other categories that you see on there is our support staff that we have working on this.
Gotcha, okay. So you guys really are the guys. I see all the hours invested in the layout. That's great. Um, let's see, uh, I think we've talked about the experience you have, which is great. Um, I I share the concern about the survey and, you know, how you would determine unique, uniquely identified people submitting um, their comments. Is there a way to make sure it's uniquely different people?
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, um, yes, there is. And so on the survey, um, one of the things that we talked about was really working with the city to develop that content. Um, we had kickoff meeting and and I think some just kind of orientation, um, you know, ramp up uh, meetings planned for. And I think that that'll be a great opportunity to develop the content for that survey and identify those groups that we want to target within within those questions.
Okay, but but there'd be a way that, you know, a couple of people can have 10 different email addresses and like load up the system and, I just share the concern about the survey as well, because, you know, we want to get to the right place.
Yeah, the the um, the software that we use will distinguish it by IP address, which allows you not, or which makes it not possible for them to, as you say, kind of load up their their responses.
Okay. Um, and and just kind of revisit the underwater piece. So basically, with what you're you're going to do and with the information you have, including the underwater information that's already been done, you feel like you you're going to have the viable information you need for a legitimate, you know, plan that we can bank on, so to speak?
Well, that's that's the goal. I mean, my my experience has been that most of the time, a lot of the damage is visible in what's called the splash zone, which is the area between high and low tide. So if we get out there at the low tide, we should be able to see some of the most significant corrosion. Um, as indicated before, I will jump in the water, um, and with a snorkel, go down to the bottom of the wall, make sure you don't have any exposed panels or undermining um, of your panels in various locations. But um, from the age and and serviceable life, I should be able to do it with the information provided and as described.
Okay, great. Um, so I I think my last question is for our staff. And that is, um, you know, when I look at all these issues and all the studies we've had and, you know, I can get down there and look at it, you know, a lot of stuff's open and obvious. So I guess $99,000 is a lot of money. Um, you know, why do we have to have somebody tell us a lot of stuff that's open and obvious and we've known it and we've studied it for over the years?
Right. So the next step will be for us to actually rebuild our docks that need to be rebuilt. Uh, what this group of experts is going to tell us is legitimately first, what needs to be done first, second and third. We need an engineer to tell us that and what that timeline would be. Secondly, is that there are various scenarios that may come out of that information. It may be, nope, you've got time on all three docks and the main, the fishing pier. It may be, no, this one pier has to be done first and maybe all three of them need to be done at the same time. Um, so the next step will be for us to actually budget what piers get rebuilt, when, in what direction, in what slip configuration and in what material. And without this study, we cannot determine, I, the best answer may not, the plan was just rebuild it as we have now, but that may mean, may not be the best answer for the long-term plan of the marina. Um, so without, this is the the guiding light that will then say, when we go to spend much more than this on the actual construction of those three piers, um, and the associated um, docks around the the perimeter of the basin, what the best plan of 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 action is. So without this plan, we really can't, we can, we can just say, okay, we're going to rebuild Dock A, then B, then C in years three, five and seven, um, and just rebuild them as they are now. But um, this will tell us uh, what the cost difference is between fixed and floating, what the slip configuration is, what the direction is, that we can make that, and what the timeline really should be.
And we're saying that we're not capable of doing that in-house?
No. No, we're not.
Just expertise and time?
Right, okay. And and also master planning the associated public facilities as well. You know, harbor master building, the boat club, um, you know, the day docks, all those components and the traffic circulation in the area, which Vice Mayor has noted is is has been a a great discussion in the community. So, um, you know, should we one-way it, should we, you know, all those sorts of things, how how should the traffic circulate through there, so?
Yeah, it's it's going to be an interesting project for you guys, because I mean, obviously, it's got its limitations based on the size of the of the area, but, um, okay. And and I, please, 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 I hope that we can get cost estimates that, because we we can never live up to our cost estimates these days. Um, but anyway, okay, that that answers my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Walker.
Oh, yes, ma'am. So prior to this, there was a lot of discussion in terms of what the scope of the master plan was going to look like. We talked about just the basin, uh, the basin to include the harbor master building, um, possibly the surrounding areas, the parking lot, um, and again, the little peninsula there where the boat club uh, building is. Can you just confirm for me what that scope is exactly now, and just part of this master plan?
Yeah, so the the structural analysis of the boat club is being done separately um, outside of their scope, but everything else is included in this.
Okay. Um, the other question, I I think it was touched on, but I want to just make sure I understood the answer. You have your listed stakeholders in the proposal and uh, I I just want to confirm that the businesses are going to be part of that stakeholder group, right?
Absolutely, yeah. That was a a generic list. Um, we will be working with them once we get the project approved, uh, to sit down and schedule exactly who those groups are, how we're going to break them up. Um, but yes, the businesses will absolutely be included in one of those stakeholder groups.
Okay, great, thanks. And then, um, the other one, I'll I'll save the task five for comment, but um, the timing of this, okay, so six months, uh, we can expect a report back in June, or June-ish of 2024. Will, will there be sufficient enough time from the issuance of the master plan to start getting the identified and um, infrastructure repairs, replacement, et cetera incorporated into the capital improvement plan for 2025?
Yes, remember, remember that six-month timeline is that they'll actually be bringing their second round to you at that point.
Okay.
Um, so there are two loops through this, as as James mentioned. So we, initial analysis, community input, commission, go back to the community, come back to the commission, um, with the final product. So we have one, the first go-round, we're we're talking about like three different options. The second go-round, we're narrowing it down to one. Uh, so yes, we'll have time uh, within that process to work with Les and his team to make sure that we get uh, these initial estimates and and the process incorporated into the future capital budget.
Great, I appreciate that clarification. Um, yeah, no, no further questions.
So just based on that question, Jennifer, you'll be able to put a placeholder in there?
Yes.
For something, even if we don't have the exact amount, best guess at the time?
Yes.
Because we don't want to have to push it off. I mean, we've been waiting a long time for the master plan to tell us this stuff for quite a while.
Right, yes.
Okay, so just a couple of questions, um, and and I'm just going to stick with staff at this point unless uh, our our consultants want to jump in. Um, this is the award of proposals, so I'm I'm fine with it. I just don't remember our discussion about the scope. I don't remember all the details of it and I'm just want to double-check a couple of things. Um, so I I heard earlier where they showed that they'll they'll tell us based on um, current use and desire of use, the list we have, to how we want to configure our docks and everything. Will will the organization all also be able to tell us if we should expand?
Yeah, so they will, part of the scope was for them to look at possibilities of expansion.
And and where that might go?
Correct.
Okay, and then will they be looking, I know they're going to look at the transient docks, I saw that, I mean, I know that and I'm assuming they're going to know there's going to be a ferry there and all of those things. Um, will they be looking at like break, you know, a breakwater or?
Yeah, so wave attenuation.
All of those options. They're going to look at all of those things, just want to make sure, because I didn't see it mentioned.
Correct.
But I just, I'm assuming it's in there, I'm I'm just double-checking.
Yes.
Um, will they be looking at what amenities we have and what amenities we should have based on our location and all of those things? And I say amenities, it doesn't mean this is what I'm asking for, but, you know, we have the pump out, we used to have gas, we don't have gas anymore. Um, you know, should we have concierge service? I don't know what those things are, but they'll be looking at those things based on what's going on in our area to determine what would be potential service or revenue generators. Okay. Um, and they'll be looking at, I I got to assume somebody's going to be considering sea level rise when we're doing all of this?
Absolutely, yes.
Gotcha. And um, the west side of the club, you know, there's rip rap, shore, attenuation and all of that. I I assume all of that's going to be looked at if at some point in the future, there should be ships, uh, ships, not ships, boats on the other side, or if that needs to be some kind of a seawall at some time. kind of a seawall at some time in the future, or whatever. And again, I, I'm not advocating for any of it. So that'll all be looked at.
Yes, and those will probably come into, as I mentioned, your small, medium, large plan. So it's like, hey, we just maintain what we have now. Or maybe it's with these extra things, or maybe this is the big picture. What I didn't want to happen, and you all don't want to happen, is like I said earlier, when I talked about that small, medium, large, we only have a large option to look at.
No, and I, I totally agree.
And they understand the ability to phase and add in in future.
But I think what's important too is I, I want recommendations. I don't want it just options that we argue about or debate about the need for. I, I want, I would like to see our commission have, okay, these are the recommendations that we think, based on all the data pulled, based on what's going on around you, and based on the service level of our city and potential revenue, this is what we think you should do. And here's how you can phase it.
Also based upon what's financially feasible.
Well, that too. But I mean, obviously, we know that any of the larger things, I mean, if you look at our capital program right now, we know any of the very large pieces of this, like we have to do a breakwall, or if we have to, if we are going to expand slips, those are multimillion-dollar projects. And they're not going to be able to be addressed until the next penny. Period. We know that. But there's a lot of stuff in between that you can do to prepare. So I don't want us to think we have no money now. We don't, but we will. And if we do this right, we'll have enough projects between 2025 and, let's say, 2027 or '28, when you start being able to kind of lean on the next penny, then you can start doing some of the bigger things, or preparing, getting permitting. You can get a permit and then don't have to do the project, you know, but you can start to prepare it. And I guess that's for a future commission to determine. But I definitely want recommendations. So you guys hear me when I say that. Yeah, that, that to me is very important, based on, again, what's going on in the world, what's going on around us in our county, you know, and the data that, that you all, Laurie and Laney and Vince and everybody provide, what our potential can be. Because that's the point of a master plan, is to kind of outline, over the next 25 years, this is what we see.
Mayor, can I just tag on that?
Yes.
Just to, to that point about the financial consideration, I totally get what you're saying, but, but I, but I want this commission to have what the full recommendation is.
Yeah.
And then, oh, but hey, realistically, this is what we think we can do financially. That way.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Right. I mean, I don't, I don't want the staff to limit that view. I want us to have the whole view. And then obviously, you know, we can decide whether that, what makes sense and what doesn't, so.
And I, I think the reason I'm really pushing this, that, is because if you look, yeah, we've done a lot of plans. We've not done much of any action, other than maintenance here. And so this marina has been around for decades and decades and decades. And it's just time for us to look at what the next couple of decades should look like, because the world has changed in this arena. And so to me, it's really important to just, you know, think about all of those things and not just stay the same. You know, unless that's going to be what's recommended, and I doubt that's what you're going to tell us. But that's the whole point of the master plan, so. Okay.
Mayor?
And John, I was just going to say, that goes back to your sort of zero base.
And thank you on that zero base. I didn't mention the mooring fields, but that should would just be what the current status is at that given point in time or off into the future of mooring fields, just so that they know themselves while they're talking to people. Any one of the groups that they're talking with, or what, what they know what the status is of, of potential mooring groups. Not saying I'm not supporting or not.
Yeah, no, it's not about advocating.
No.
Because I mean, I know the Boat Club will have a heart attack when they hear what I said about slips on the other side, but we have to look at all of those things if we have the need, and that's the only place to put it. And then again, it's also looking at Edgewater Arms. What are they using their waterfront for? I don't know. Again, Edgewater Arms don't have a panic. But I mean, we have to look at all of those things. So, okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak to this item? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the award of proposal to Kim Lee Horn in the amount of essentially $100,000?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Toranga and Commissioner Walker. Thank you. Vice Mayor, any final comments?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm delighted that you have some experience in, in this. By that, I mean a lot of experience. I'm also, I'm also delighted that you are aware of a lot of the information that's been developed in the past, and, and also really concerned and really supportive of you looking really off into the future, not, not so much of where we are today, but what might be happening in there. But we, and, and understanding that we have people that are in the marina and that segment of the people that would be giving input that are very anxious for us to do something with, with regards to their capacity of, of keeping a boat in our current marina at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Walker.
Yeah, so obviously, where the, where the rubber hits the road on this is Task Five, the master plan concept development. This, in my opinion, is an extremely ambitious project. There are a lot of elements that are, you're going to be looking at. There's going to be a lot of elements, a lot of data that you're going to collect. And I do want to just express also my concern for the survey process, only because of the fact that there's a, you're, you're going to get a lot of input from the stakeholders. And it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be challenging to sift through that input. It's been my experience over the last year, having been involved with this, and, you know, I would, I would, my, my suggestions, my recommendations would be basically, make sure that you have a methodology in place to prioritize. That's going to be very important, because you, there have to be some element of justification coming out of this of why we picked X, Y, Z. The other part, and in terms of getting the full picture with the recommendation, there's the, there's the cost estimate element of that. There's, there's, there's other aspects in that recommendation. But what's also important, this is, this is going to be important to the justification piece I just mentioned, is, is that you're going to need to know why those recommendations were made, because we're going to have to have some element of.
I totally agree.
Justification.
We, we have to be able, because you'll have, in this particular element, and I'm just talking to you.
Yeah.
In this particular element of our city, there are very strong public opinion. And so we have to have justification for the recommendations, you know? Maybe it's a missing element of what's going on in the other marinas. Maybe it's because data shows we can make more revenue. Maybe this is a trend of what's going on in most marinas, and we're missing it. But yeah, we need justification for the recommendations.
Yeah, no, perfect.
Sure.
Yeah, great. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Franny?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great, that was a great last point. Many points were great, but that was good. I, you know, James, James and Casey, I get a good vibe from you two. I, this is a big project. It's really important. And, and there will be, you know, a lot of chatter in, to work through about what the best things to do for the vision of the future of the, the marina. We have not changed with the, with, with a lot of things that are going on with marinas now. So, you know, you got a big job. And, and I, again, I'm, I'm looking at you guys and getting a good feeling that you, you're the guys that can make this happen. But, but it is a big task. So I, you know, I, I, but I'm optimistic and I'm glad we're doing it. I think it's really important. And, you know, I'm personally excited about the prospect of being able to kind of do some things for our marina that kind of takes it to that next level, that, that we should get it up to, you know, kind of modern days. So that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Gao?
Thank you, Mayor. This certainly is a long time coming. We've been talking about this for a while. There's been certainly several different iterations and just ideas that we've, we've floated out there. So I'm glad that this is kind of all coming together. I did echo the same concerns over the cost. I'm starting to lean toward, oh geez, another consultant, another study. But there's no doubt that the timeline, we're, we're looking at the amount of hours that they're putting in, the skill level and experience that, that comes with this sort of study and master plan is certainly warranted. So I, I am on board. And certainly, when we're talking about bringing the marina up to date and talking about being modern and, and what's around us, and talking about sea level rise, I certainly hope that takes into consideration not just resiliency in protecting ourselves, but how to be forward-thinking and working with the natural coastline, and how that fits in to what the marina is today and what it can be in the future, as far as not just building bigger seawalls, but natural shorelines or, however, I don't know what's out there in that modern world of, of climate change and sea level rise and how that fits in to our community. But I'm, I am in favor of this, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm very excited. It's something I brought forward, I don't know, five, six years ago, that we had a pandemic. I mean, it's been something we've talked about for a long time. I feel really good about the timeframe, because again, you know, we're going into 2024. Nothing, and probably even just a small amount, we'll get into the '25 budget. And it gives us, you know, time to start to prepare for those larger things that I am quite sure are going to be recommended. But I could, you know, it's, it's two years in permitting. We all know that. I mean, we all know that anything that we change that isn't keeping it exactly the same is going to take a long time for permitting. So it gives us enough time before the next penny to, A, get that permitting and then not just have a thing sitting on the shelf. So, and be prepared for when the new funding does, does come in. So I'm, I'm happy about that. Gentlemen, I'm, I'm confident in, you know, what you, what you've presented. Thank you very much. Appreciate your experience. Anybody from the public? Did I already ask that?
You did.
I did, okay. All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Toranga?
Aye.
Mayor Bishowsky?
Aye, and that, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. Appreciate it very much. And again, great Boat Club boat parade party. I say, I messed it up again. And I'm not in this, and I'm not in the same condition right now as I was when I said it on the stage, so. See, it's just a thing. It had nothing to do with my condition. All right, why don't we go ahead and take a break before we jump back into the regular, before I get myself in any trouble? Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good day, and thanks for joining us at last minute. Welcome back to our December 5th City Commission Work Session. We will move on to the normal schedule of our action items. So our first action item, going back to the original schedule, is the annual selection of our vice mayor. We have the, we have an outline of the nomination section. Hang on a minute, let me just read this. So I'm going to read this. We do this every first December, first meeting in December. The nomination process will be explained. So I will open the floor for nominations. Each member of the commission, upon recognition by the chair, shall have the right to place a nomination for the honorary office of vice mayor, the name of any other commissioner, commissioner before nominations are closed. Nominations do not require a second. When all nominations have been made, the chair will so announce and declare nominations closed. If only one commissioner is nominated, that person will be declared by the chair to be elected and shall serve until a successor is elected. If more than one nomination has been made, selection of the vice mayor will be accomplished by written ballot. Balloting shall continue until the nominee receives a simple majority of votes, whereupon the chair shall declare the nominee as being elected. If no nominations are made or if no nominee nominees are elected by a majority vote after three ballots have been taken, the commissioner with the longest term of continuous service shall be deemed selected. In the event, there are two or more commissioners of equal continuous service, then the selection shall be done by lot. So Rebecca has given us the sheet that shows the rotating. According to our board rules and regulations, we, we try to rotate this in a fair manner. When you look at the last appointments, I'm just going to say, not trying to force anybody into anything, but it appears that the next person in rotation, barring our newbie guy, Rob, no offense to you, Rob, but you are new, would be Commissioner Franny.
I agree.
Okay, so are there any other nominations? No? Anybody from the public wish to speak? Okay, let's, let's just, for official purposes, let's have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
And I already double-checked with Rebecca. We don't need to move around our seats until our meeting in January.
The 12th.
Oh, the 12th.
The 12th, I'll have it also.
So I kind of already know, if you want to know, Mo will move here. The next seniority, which is Commissioner Gao, will move here. We'll leave you where you are and you'll go next to Rebecca.
Yay.
Well, just so you know, when you walk in, what to look for. I mean, you know, I hate to do that with.
Commissioner Gao, welcome to the shallow end of the pool.
I will say, this is the best seat.
Now, that was my first seat and I love that seat.
Yeah, it is a good seat. I don't know why, but it's just, it's a good seat.
I always felt like you could misbehave over there.
Thank you for giving it to me. Yeah, well, I knew what I told.
And I'm going to be sad to leave this side. I mean, I love, you know, everybody, but I've been over here for a couple of years now, so.
Okay, so the next is our travel policy. There is a red line version that we were given. So if I can just go over what those red line things were. These were, I think we talked about this. This is some of our rules earlier in April. And I know that Jennifer and Jennifer and Rebecca have reviewed these. Some of these might be some of their recommendations. So if I can just go over those with you. The first thing is Section 9, Toronto trip. Those are simply corrections for understanding. They don't change the methodology, if you will. The red line of removing the entertainment of official visitors was actually that, that should have been in a different spot, so it's being removed from there. The addition of language to the Scotland trip, just trying to balance it out, which essentially is just telling us how it gets paid for, but it also, it also added four nights. I will say to you all, as a person who's done this, there's two days of travel and we go, we go to Toronto three nights. I, I would like to see us remove the number of nights. And let me tell you why. Well, A, we have two days of travel. It's a day to get there and a day to get back. So that leaves you with two days to be in Scotland, which is unheard of for, for a trip like that. But I don't think we should really limit ourselves. And there is some caveat there to some oversight. We are bringing it back to the commission to approve the trip anyway. It's scheduled in our budget, so it's discussed then. I think we can, when we come and vote on it here on the dais, we can talk about the number of days we're anticipating. In addition, it's generally usually the mayor that goes, but if it's not the mayor, it's usually the liaison that goes. And the mayor's travel is approved by the city manager. And the liaison, if the liaison is not the mayor, is approved by the mayor's position. So there is some oversight, is my point. I think limiting it to a number of days just doesn't give us the flexibility we might need. But I would like to hear your feedback on it.
Who came up with the four nights?
Jennifer.
Actually, I did, and it was really based upon, I wasn't considering the travel, you know, to and from. But it says, it's clear here, it says, the reimbursable duration of such trips shall be up to four nights. So the trip starts when you take off and finishes when you land, essentially. So it isn't enough time.
Yeah, so it wasn't anything we talked about here.
Yeah, I was thinking four nights specifically in Sterling, not the travel.
Right, and this upcoming trip, we're already, we've already got five. We're already at five in this upcoming trip.
If we're having a discussion, I'm going to jump in.
Sure.
It says reimbursement for four nights. So I, I think, I think that makes, I know you're not saying that. I'm saying it sounds, it sounds plausible to me. And I think that it, it sounds good to the, to the residents and to, to those that see that we're, you know, we're heading off to, off to Scotland. It is reimbursable for four nights. It's not how long it takes, it's just that you get four nights there that are going to be reimbursed in having been a significant traveler.
And in our last trip, we, our last four night, I mean, it, you're, you're already having an extra night just from travel. So then you have three nights in Sterling. They come here for at least five to six nights. You know what I'm saying? I'm not saying that that's what it's always going to be. I'm trying to give us flexibility. In this trip coming up, we've already seen, we have a night of travel. We have a night with Highland Games and the tattoo. We have two nights because of the band performance. And we have a night and a half with the Sterling, our sister city people. So we've already gone over that, just because of the travel time. And it's not unusual. I mean, that's what we did the last time. And we did extensive work with Sterling. But it was, again, the four nights is something that Jennifer just came up with without, you know, not thinking that part of it through. It wasn't anything we talked about. And I just think if we, I just think we don't put a number of nights.
Well, now that she's had time to think it through.
Do you, do you agree with that or?
I do. In terms of, of, I mean, the entire trip itself, that there you land, you're there all day, and then, you know, the number of nights. And it really does depend upon the configuration of the trip.
Right, there's two different kinds of trips.
When I was thinking about this in particular, the last time that we went there, we went with a larger group. So the activity of, of the officials from the city of Dunedin was, was pretty fast-paced in terms, it was one thing after another and then, you know.
We were dead.
Yeah, and then we're gone. So, you know, I think, and we didn't really have a chance to really meet a lot of their elected officials either. So, you know, because of the, of the larger group we were traveling with. So I think that the trip itself, depending upon who it is in Sterling, in Scotland, that we're going to be, you know, meeting with and, and that type of a thing. I think that, that, I do agree that we shouldn't restrict ourselves to four nights. I do. And, and I think that the oversight that's afforded for the trip, because it's approved on the dais, is, is enough. Because, you know, the itinerary, you can talk about who you're meeting. Once we, you know, once we kind of narrow the scope of exactly what, what, what the trip's going to do, then we can, we can approve the number of nights. But to, you know, what I don't want to do is, is go to Scotland and then have that question that, that you were in the air and then you spent two nights there and then that's it. You know, and then you're in the air again and that's it, that's the whole trip.
And if I can just add to that, the last time we went in 18 or 19, whenever it was, we did go with a whole group. It was the first time that it was city-initiated with a whole group. Prior to that, all of the trips that were ever taken, and I'm not including the History Museum trip that was taken with the band and everything, was always generally the mayor and his wife or her husband. And so when you're just going as a couple like that, the mayor, yeah, you're going to, you're going to spend a lot more time doing a lot more things. I mean, I think we can try to cap it, if you want. But I don't think we should get into too specifics because you're really limiting and then you're arguing against the four nights, you know. And I, I just think that's a limiting thing.
If I can jump in.
Sure.
I do like the flexibility of not having it in there and allow, we can then build the framework of the trip, the itinerary, into what fits in the need of the commission. But we've also talked about the large number of people going and not going, and that plays a role. Just for me personally, it's not, I'm going with a large group. It's a large group that's going with me and.
I agree.
And making sure that it fits into the duties of, of my responsibility.
That's how we looked at it. And it was different this year than the last time that we went because we actually tried to, well, we insisted that the events, not events, but the, some of the things we were doing, the whole group could come. Like if we're visiting the Art and History Museum there, which has a relationship with our Art and History Museum, they came here and saw us. So we're going, you know, that's something the whole group can do. And, and then there was purposefully planned time for us to go do our own educational thing. Like I can only assume you're going to want to meet with their sustainability people, knowing who you are.
In their schools.
Right, in their schools. And, you know, maybe Commissioner Walker doesn't want to do that. You know, maybe he wants to go, I don't know what, but there's, there'll be options, right? And there'll be other things for that group to go do while we're doing our thing. So we did it a little differently this year to make sure we were maximizing everybody's time.
Yeah, I mean, truthfully, I mean, I think that this will have oversight. To me, the biggest thing is, we'll see the itinerary. If anybody's as a representative is going to get city tax dollars to help the trip, you know, it's based on, you know, a, a service that's being done on behalf of the citizens of Dunedin. And therefore, we're going to see the itinerary, we're going to see how it is official versus not official, and we're going to make some of those decisions and we, we want to do them responsibly. I mean, and I, I do think we should say something in this section too about, you know, support of our city bands. I mean, because to me, like, you know, you know, I plan to try to go in August to, on the trip. I personally will be funding it my own, with my own money. But the biggest part for me is the city bands. I really want to support the city bands.
And that's two days and two nights.
And I think that should, you know, that's not always going to be the case, but it, if, if we can always drive it, it's kind of an exciting piece. Because how cool is that for us to be able to watch our city bands, you know, competing abroad? So, yeah, I'm, I'm okay. I mean, I, again, I, you know, I just think from a citizen point of view, you know, they're looking for something reasonable and, you know, what's official, what's not official. Part of when I look at this, you know, I could be a conservative and I can say, hey, I don't think we should do any of this. City taxpayers shouldn't spend it. But the reality is, if you're sitting up here and you're in a certain role that you've been elected to, we don't make a lot of money as elected officials. Some people can't afford to do that official capacity if they don't get some help. So you don't, I don't want this to end up being an elitist group on the commission. They ought to be able to, you know, if they need help with their official duty, I want to be able to provide it. I think we can decide as a board what's reasonable based on itinerary. So that's kind of where I stand.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm right there with Commissioner Franny in terms of how this gets decided. I read this to be four nights and I think that that's reasonable. Yeah, and I'm also paying for this, I'm paying for this myself, so it really doesn't, you know, have an impact.
Your microphone.
But I do want to make sure that, that since we are going in an official capacity, that we are maximizing the, the resources to do that.
So are you okay with removing the four-night limitation or?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, just to, to circle back, because we've heard some people are, are paying, some people might need help. Does there need to be something in here to clarify who is going in an official capacity? That it's reimbursable versus, you know, am, am I going and getting reimbursed by the city versus Commissioner Walker going, but he's paying his own dime?
But you're a liaison, you're the liaison to the organizations.
So does that need to be acknowledged in there? Mayor liaisons. And just so the public reading this gets an understanding.
Again, I don't, I don't think we, I mean, generally with the Toronto trip. Let's just put it this way. With the Toronto trip, all of us, there's separate money put aside for the Toronto trip, just like there's separate money put aside for the Scotland trip. But all of us have our own travel budgets, okay? And generally, for the Toronto trip line item, it's usually either the mayor and the mayor or the liaison that gets reimbursed. But that doesn't mean if you want to save your regular travel money and go to Toronto and that's how you want to use it, nobody's going to tell you you can't. You understand what I'm saying?
I'm, I, I do.
Generally, what we do is we pick one to two people. But I also don't want to limit because like Rob was new this year. And it was just like, remember when you went with Mo that one year? You were new.
Right.
And it was important for you to go, see it, be experienced at it. Same with you. There's no way to know when you're going to have a new people. You'd have to sit here and, that's, that's too specific, I think, to put in rules and regs. I, I think we talk about it openly and honestly on the dais, you know, and, you know, we've tried to have, I think flexibility is key. The one year that we did the contract, we all went. We all went because we signed that contract. And it was a celebration. And Clearwater, when they go to the Phillies, they all go, except one, this last time. But they all go. So I, I think it's really the choice of the commissioner, how they want to spend their own travel budget. If they don't want to, they're given $3,000 a year, at least that's what the budget is now, right? Three grand for the year to travel to conferences, to travel to wherever. They can use it, like even though I sign off on your travel, I don't tell you what you can and can't do. You decide that for what you feel is best in your role that particular year. I would not want to mess with that. That's just my humble opinion.
No, that makes sense. That's not the way I was thinking about it, which is, I was focused on the Scotland trip.
Yeah, and the Scotland trip, I mean, the Scotland trip, what we've kind of said is every four years. So it's not an every year, it's not an annual trip like the Toronto trip. It's every four years. It's usually, they come here in the one, two-year period and we go there in the one, two-year period. That's how we've tried to time it. And also so that we have four-year terms. So that the mayor or the liaison or whoever chose. chose in, for whatever reason, goes, it's once in a term. You're not going to Scotland five times, you know what I'm saying? So that's kind of how we, we put it out there, but, you good?
I'm good. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Torga?
I, again, have no problem leaving it with four nights. It's guidance for someone who's trying to, who may be even building an itinerary, and I think it's good for, for the, for the residents to, to see that. I don't know, if you want to put it up more days or, or, you know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna vote just how everybody, how everybody feels about this. I don't want to be called out on this, but, but I think there, because you're making some great points, and if there's something that's happening there, then I would certainly come.
You'd want the flexibility.
If it were me, I would say, hey, wait a minute, we have this policy, I'd like to have, you know, let's, 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 let's modify this or let's change this. So, you know, if we're going, if you're going on official business, which I've done a lot of, you, you jam your stuff in there and get it done.
You do, you do, and you try to keep it short. I just think with the travel time and the four nights, you got two nights automatically that are travel time, the night before you leave. And then if you say it that way, you don't even get reimbursed for your, what do you call it, subsistence, or?
I don't get that when you say the night before you leave, you're not staying overnight anywhere, so it's not-
No, no.
I mean, so-
No, but, so when you're doing your, if you're doing your money for meals, right? It's considered a night, because if it's saying they're only paying, if you're leaving at six o'clock at night and you get there at 10 o'clock in the morning-
They're reimbursable, right.
They're reimbursable expenses, but if it's saying four nights-
I consider that four hotel nights.
Oh, absolutely.
I get it, but let me just tell you, I've done a lot of these complicated trips and I get questioned constantly about that kind of thing.
But that's really why the four nights went in there like that, is four hotel room nights.
Four hotel room nights.
Which seems, when you read it, it really does say, reimbursable duration of such ship is four nights.
Yeah.
So that's what I, I was really worried about, because that really is, it can be construed otherwise.
Yeah, and we don't need that. I agree, we don't want something that can be construed two ways.
Right.
Okay, so that's the only other change to this document would be to remove the up to four nights. So, plus whatever the other redline items that they brought in, can we, can we?
What verbiage are you gonna put in there and place it?
Just remove up, just remove the, shall be reimbursable, or, you know, I'm not gonna wordsmith it, Jennifer and, Jennifer, Jennifer and Rebecca can make its sense, just remove the four nights.
Well, whatever you change it to, you'll, you'll give to us, so we, because I think you have to wordsmith that a little bit.
Yeah, reimbursable according to city commission approval.
Yeah.
Right.
And we have to bring back the resolution for your approval.
Yep.
Okay, that's good.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so can I have a motion to that effect?
Before, can, one of the things that was brought up, and I just want to make sure that is to support of our city bands being added into that, is that something that you're in consensus to move forward on?
Yeah, let's do that too, because I think people probably don't realize that.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that before you do a motion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve those changes?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Gow and Commissioner Walker, anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing or hearing none? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll have a resolution brought back in January for final approval. Okay.
Thank you.
Then we have the commission's rules of procedure. There weren't a lot of changes. There was a change on page seven regarding adding the AV equipment that, that Rebecca wanted to add, that they can provide, and then the only other change really, besides page numbering, was the paper ballot. Again, I'm just going to say, I did speak, because, you know, we had that paper ballot issue with the LPA, but the issue was, is that our clerk didn't read it. It wasn't the issue of doing a paper ballot, it was the issue that the clerk didn't read it. So I did want to just say to you all, and I have spoken extensively with both Jennifer and, and Rebecca about it, the only time we use it, and this is coming from a chair's perspective, not me personally, but just from an ease in running a meeting, the only time we've used it has been when we voted on a city manager or charter official, okay? We've used it in that way, and we use it with the charter or ordinance review committees, like if you're, or any ad hoc committee, let me say, when we appoint one, so there's five, and then there's maybe two more, right? And we just, we'll write our top two, and then Rebecca reads it and gives us who, who fills, providing that does. Now she reads it, she said who voted on it. The reason this helps from a, running the, running the, that agenda item, it, it stops somebody from, it makes, A, it's more polite to the people who are on the list for the committees, because you're not out there arguing why one person is better than the other. It goes much more smoothly. I have been a part of it, not this commission, but I've been a part of other commissions where people want to jump to do the motion, and then other people's opinions, then you now have to debate about a person over a person. And I feel like that is not a polite thing to do to our residents. So it's not used that often, but it's used in those circumstances, which I feel is just, it's smoother and it's much more polite, it's a much more polite way of doing it. It still gets read, but nobody's debating. Everybody just writes what they want, it gets added up, and that's, that's the result. So I think we can leave the paper ballots, but in discussing with Rebecca, I think we add the statement for protection, that says the city clerk will read the results and read who voted what. Is that okay with you all? Do you, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I totally do.
Again, it doesn't happen that often.
No, I agree though, because I know exactly what you're saying, it gets a little icky.
Yeah, and I-
And you don't need that, because it just, it can create hard feelings unnecessarily, so.
Yeah. So is everybody okay with that? With adding that statement and?
I'm, I'm fine with it, Mayor. I just, I did have concerns about striking it out, just because-
Leaving your options open.
Yeah, knowing it was there for a reason, getting rid of it, you know.
Commissioner? Vice Mayor? Commissioner? Commissioner? Okay, can I have a motion for the adjustment in that change and whatever else is on there?
Is that for the whole resolution?
Yeah.
Oh, can we talk about, give input, anything else?
Oh, sure, I'm so sorry, go right ahead. I should have asked, is there any other changes?
So, if I may, so last year, we, I, I brought this up again, so I'm gonna do it just in, in a sweeping generality, and just let my point be known, and that is that we talked about commission meetings and work sessions, and I asked to have some communication, discussion about that, we did. It led us to making really no change. Was also asked of the city manager to come back and give us input of how they'd like to proceed if they would like to change it. I would like to, I, once more, make a comment, and matter, as a matter of fact, I'll be much more direct this time.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, where, where are you, just so I can see where?
Page three?
Yeah, page three of nine, types of meetings, commission meeting and, and work sessions. I'll wait till you get there.
I'm here, thank you.
You bet, thank you for asking. So I would like to, I really would like to see us move to something like a Thursday, all Thursday night meetings as opposed to a Tuesday morning, any kind of a Tuesday morning meeting, that's being very direct. And the purpose of that is really singularly, it's not when they watch it or how they watch it, meaning the resident or anybody that's watching it, that may want to watch it on a tape or watch it directly, but it's the fact that someone can come here and, and give the input. And I know we have different work schedules, people work different hours, but generally in the evening, most people are pretty much equipped to be able to come here if they wish, to give input, if they wanted to give input direct. So I, I asked a number of people, this is not statistically significant, I asked enough people that I felt comfortable, again, in bringing this up, and, and I would like for us to consider that. If we don't consider that today, or make any changes, that, that would, that was, that's gonna probably be my position for, for some time period now. I just think it's more effective, it's more effective for us. We can have a meeting, we could have a meeting the first, first three Thursdays of a month, and, and handle pretty much everything. For example, this time, we're having a meeting today and not having a meeting on Thursday, because, well, we only had one item, or maybe no, I can't even remember, we had a very light schedule, so we just pushed everything into today. I think it's just more convenient, more convenient for the resident if they wish to come, and it's always consistent that you have a meeting on a Thursday at six o'clock. That's my comment, and that's my input, thank you.
Okay, I just want to read this too, work sessions, these meetings are meant to address day-to-day, and those are on Tuesdays, these meetings are meant to address day-to-day action items that require a vote, as well as longer informational items that do not require a vote. So the purpose of this stuff is to, it's generally stuff that people don't want to comment on. Jennifer, do you have a opinion, one way or another? Like, because I, I think we also wanted, when we did this, part of it is we had a lot of development projects, which we don't have right-
Are you gonna take some comments from us too?
Yeah, but I'm trying to get Jennifer's opinion before we get into it. Part of it is, I just lost my train of thought now, part of it is because we wanted to address, we wanted to split the development things and the things that cause a lot, a lot of folks to come out and speak, so that they're not sitting to the end of the night to wait to talk because of all the other things. The other part was staff time. So, do you want to?
Well, yeah, I'll preface my comments with, as I did last year as well, staff will be here when the city commission is, is in session, and, and we'll make sure that we're here whenever it is, of course, that the city commission's going to meet. The, and I remember, you know, six years ago when I started and there was, there was active development in the community, we were in a development mode at that time, and once we get into quasi-judicial hearings, they can be long, really long. And we do have a number of, of quasi-judicial hearings that are coming up before the city commission. We have been going through a lull, and the lull is, is really based upon, first of all, the pandemic followed by the construction market, you know, construction environment. There has not been a lot, a lot of large-scale construction projects that the city commission would see, and that's over five units, or 5,000 square feet. So you don't see a lot of design review right now. So those Thursday night meetings are pretty short, you have your, you know, your presentations and proclamations, and then, and then some city commission items which require a Thursday night meeting, being, if it's a public hearing, if it's quasi-judicial, which is, you know, by its nature, a public hearing. And so, you know, I think that that explains why there are the light Thursday meetings. I think that that will change again, once, once we get some larger-scale developments. I think that actually, the, the utility of the Thursday morning meeting is not just when we were-
Tuesday morning?
I mean, yeah, Tuesday morning meeting, sorry, it's not just when we're purchasing widgets and that type of thing, but really the, the workshop items, which can get pretty long. And you figure right now, it's, it's, it's 11:05, we've been at this two hours and five minutes, and then you lop on top of that to, one or two quasi-judicial hearings, and then you're, you're into a late night, which, you know, for the residents is not, who are sitting here all night long, is probably not a really good thing. So, and you can certainly move those items up in the agenda, but I, I know that, that this particular, the types of meetings and when they're scheduled and how they're scheduled was to address that issue of those really long Thursday night meetings. But, you know, and I do concern, I, I am concerned about those workshop meetings, the, you know, during the, it used to be called workshop meeting, it's a work session now. For staff, they're incredibly useful as far as getting that consensus direction and, and really mulling over and looking under every stone and rock of items. And, and if we're doing that late on a Thursday night, I don't think that that's going to be as useful as it usually is to all of you or, or to staff, certainly. So if anything happens here, I would like to see that workshop remain on a Tuesday somehow, so that we can really bring those items for consensus direction to the city commission.
Okay, Commissioner Frady?
So, you know, I, I've, I agree a lot of what I was gonna say, Vice Mayor, but Commissioner Torga said, I, you know, I've, you know, I've always been somewhat concerned that our Thursday night meetings are less and less and less, and sometimes get canceled, because last year we canceled even more of them, and, you know, Thursday night historically's been the night, you know, when, if you're gonna tune into action stuff happening in city Dunedin, it's Thursday night. Now, granted, you know, social media's changed, so you can replay meetings, et cetera, but again, you know, Thursday night's kind of the night, historically, you know, and people are gonna kind of go with what you train them to do, right? And, and so, you know, I, I think recently I was in a room with Sue Berness, and she made the comment, yep, we know people tune in more Thursday night. That's the more watchable time. So, again, I did, I think Thursday night should always be primary, and I am, and I will continue to be concerned that it's not primary. Tuesday has become primary, it just has. I'm a creature, historically, you know, when I was on staff, that we had Thursday night meeting, you had a lot of your items, which gave more time for the city manager to meet with commissioners, you know, typically Tuesday was the briefings, because you didn't have a, you didn't have the workshop meeting, so you did your, you did your briefings. And you had time to respond, you had time to get back, you know, now you do Monday briefings, you really don't have a lot of time to get back to commissioners, and therefore, that, that makes the meeting more elongated, not that you wouldn't bring some stuff up because citizens should know, but it worked well, and then you had workshops as needed. So when you had your workshop, and I totally agree, you, you want to have workshops, and they make sense to have them during the day. And they're big issues, and we need all our staff, and it's, it's convenient, and people can watch, they can tune in even after the fact they can't be here. But, but citizen input, you know, for, is, is even more important on those action items, which always were Thursday night. So, I mean, philosophically, I, I do, I agree with Commissioner Torga, except, again, I, I'm on the side of, you gotta still have workshops and they should be as needed, you know, you could even have them standardized for every Tuesday morning, or, you know, the Tuesday morning slot, you have them, you don't have them, depending on what you've got. So, I mean, I, I have an interest in that, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we have to decide that now, but maybe in a strategic, our strategic planning, you know, we, we do discuss that a little bit more, but, but I, you know, I share the concern. I share the concern that, and, and I just ended, I end it with this, to me, Thursday night should still be primary, and we have, they are not. Now, and I don't disagree too, that they, they will become more primary when we start getting projects again, and it would be nice then to still have flexibility to move and sway between Tuesday and Thursday. But at least, you know, for the last two years, they, Thursday nights have not been primary, they've been, you know, people will tune in and they're like, oh my God, like, they tune in at half hour, and it's like, oh, did you guys have a meeting? Because it must be over, and it was over, or, so.
Well, I will say, I will, I will say that you all gave Jennifer direction to try to balance that out, and you have done a big job of it. December's always a month, just November and December is always a month that we try to cancel a couple of meetings just because of the holidays.
Yeah, and I get that, we're not-
So I'm not worried about December, but you know how many development projects are coming. In addition, what we do on Thursday night is, once we do the workshop items here, Tuesday, when we go to vote, we definitely, we, that's when the public is there, and those are hour and a half items that we will have on a Thursday night, so those things are coming as well. But, anyway, Commissioner?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I'm, I'm all about making sure that we maximize our ability to interact with the community, and it's, it is my, my observation that Thursdays are that night. But I will, there is a caveat to that, and I, I'm saying pretty much what everybody else is saying, but I'm, I'm providing the perspective of being the new commissioner, and I'm gonna tell you that those workshops are extremely important. They're important from being able to engage on the questions, make sure that we understand what the focus is- what the focus of those are. And I think probably from the city and the staff perspective, you know, we need to give them the opportunity of consensus direction, because some of these things are complicated, and, you know, we need to have some forethought in that. So, I would, you know, I would support, you know, and again, I absolutely agree, the primary meeting is Thursday. And, you know, I would support, which, whatever method gets us to ensuring it is primary, but same token, I don't think that we would be necessarily in the best position to do the workshop things on Thursday. I really think there's a lot more benefit of doing them during the day, when the staff is here, and when we are relatively fresh, and being able to engage on these issues. So, I don't know that that's providing a recommendation one way or another, but, you know, if we go to like, the first three Thursdays, I'm okay with that. But we're going to have to have a Tuesday, or maybe two Tuesdays in that month, because we still need those workshops, and that's my input.
Jennifer, can you, not today, but can you give us a sense of how many development projects might be coming up?
Sure.
Because, again, those, it's not just development projects, but it's development projects plus the, what I'll call the final result of the workshop items.
Regular agenda items.
You know, that we normally have. I mean, I think we need to get a sense of what that is.
Right.
Because I do think that time ebbs and flows. I think we've, I think this commission has given you very clear direction to make sure that we're balancing out those meetings to the best of our ability. I don't think that's changed, that direction hasn't changed, I think you've done that, but-
Can I say something to that, if I may?
Sure.
So, just the process, during the course of agenda review, I certainly don't make those decisions in a vacuum, the department directors are there, the clerk is there, and we look at the two meetings and, and, you know, try to balance them out in terms of number of items, and, you know, certainly if it's more impactful, then we would put it on a Thursday, but there is an amount of subjectivity to that. And so, where staff, you know, where we're very careful is to hear from the five, one of the five of you, well, why did you put that on a Thursday? What, it's a consent item, why isn't it on a consent item on a Tuesday? So, you know, that, that aspect, and just kind of directing the items that are removed from a Tuesday and put on a Thursday is, at some point, shifting sands. So we're very careful in terms of what items are on a Thursday, to, you know, and a lot of these items are actually pulled off consent. Rightfully, they should be on consent, and then they're put on a Thursday night, which, as you know, is a whole different level of review of that particular agenda item. And that's not good or bad, but it's just a different review process on that agenda item. So it's, you know, it's not as easy, I think, as it seems, just balancing out the City Commission, because the agenda, the nature of the agenda items is so different sometimes.
Commissioner Gao? I didn't forget about you, I'm sorry, didn't mean to have my back to you.
No, I was, I was just listening. You know, I don't have a recommendation either, but I certainly echo everybody's comments here. The only thing, other thing that I might add is the ability for the City Commission to draw qualified candidates with a salary that were paid. And when you throw in there a schedule that was all of a sudden all over the place, I have to have room on Tuesdays, I have to make room on a Thursday night, I want to be on this committee, it makes it harder and harder to find those candidates that can not only commit to the salary, but also the time schedule of a commission. And, and so, it gets to the point now where candidates are either those that are retired, or they've got the means to do it, or they've got that profession that allows that type of flexibility in the schedule, which excludes those people that just want to serve their community. And so I think that needs to be taken into consideration. I, like everybody else, it seems to me that Thursday night is kind of the night, we all seem to agree on that. And so now it's a matter of, on a Thursday night to the night, what do we do with the need for the workshop? And I know that three Thursdays that were thrown out there, I understand what that does to staff, to work a Thursday night, especially when we're trying to be kind to them, and how to balance that, whether they get time off the next day or before they flex their hours. The more nights you ask them to work, the more flex they're doing during the day, which makes it harder for Jennifer to get people together to have meetings, because everybody's flexing. So I do think it's, it's a challenging decision. I know that when we talk about developments, they ebb and flow, they come in waves, so yes, we might have a lot of development issues coming up, but once they're done, we'll have a lull. There's not, so it's, it's not, we can't take into consideration, oh, we've got some upcoming developments, because right behind that, we'll have no development, and we'll be back in the same conversation. So I just wanted to muddy the water, I guess, a little bit more, and understand it, but I do like a Thursday night. And just to make it public, I am looking for work, I cannot do my job at the salary I'm being paid. And that's just a fact, and so-
Me neither.
I know. And so that most likely be full-time, and so if I can get full-time work, that means I can't make a Tuesday meeting.
Yeah.
And so we either make the decision now, or a decision later. You know, and that's, that's not a threat, I'm just, you know, being honest with you.
And I think we all appreciate, there's a lot of perspective. I think where we left it the last time was, again, putting it back on you and Jorge and the team, Rebecca, to just try to balance it out. I think many, many, many cities our size are doing daytime and a nighttime meeting, Clearwater does a daytime and a nighttime meeting. Heck, even in their daytime and meeting, they're not even taking public input, and we are. So, I don't think it's unusual. But I think we should see, what, what are we foreseeing in the future as far as the nighttime stuff? You know, I, I think that would be important, I think you could get back to us on that, I don't think we need to make a decision today. And we're going to have a new mayor coming in. So to me, it's kind of like, do we really want to make these big changes until a new chair comes? Let that new chair work with the city manager and the new, and the city clerk, and whoever, to try to make something that works for everybody. That's kind of the way I look at it. Why make a big change now?
Mayor, if I could say-
Yes, ma'am.
I personally don't see under any situation where we'd go to three Thursdays, because historically, we had two Thursday, two Thursday nights and workshops as needed. So if you left the four meetings in place every month, but just shifted the priorities to, you know, more action items on Thursday, you know, and then you could shift some of the action items back when you have a lot of public hearings, I just, I don't, in any, I don't envision more meetings. I actually think we could be efficient, and it wouldn't, we actually could do less, where you'd have a workshop maybe, you know, for, from nine until two-
Once a month, you're saying once a month.
On a couple of big, yeah. I mean, so, that's my view, it actually could make it more efficient and less, but I, yeah.
I just, I just feel like, given the fact, it's essentially the same thing I'm going to say with the commission liaison's positions. You know, we've got a major election coming up. Let the new commission decide what they want to do. I mean, we have given direction to our, our team to balance them out. You know, we've been really good, actually, at deciding, hey, we have a big item that we want to talk about, let's put that on a, that's, let's put that on a Thursday night, because we know people are going to want to talk about it, even if it's just a workshop item. I think you guys have done a pretty good job. December notwithstanding, it's just December, you know? We're happy to get rid of the meetings in December, because of all the events we have. I just feel like, let's not make a major change, and let the new commission, the new mayor, the new commission kind of decide what they want to do next December. That's the way I'm looking at it, but, yes, sir?
Yeah, and I think, I want to just make sure that we just kind of capture something. Commissioner Gao made an excellent point, and that has to factor in something that I hadn't necessarily thought about, but it's spot-on. And, you know, I think that has to be in the consideration of how we do this going forward, whenever we do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The candidate piece.
Yep.
Commissioner?
So, my point was, as I made in the beginning, was, my focus here was really on the residents and then on the commission, and I didn't want to say and then on, but it was on those two organizations. One of them is brought, was brought up, and the second one about the commission, that gives a consistent time for the commission, and it gives the commission an opportunity to do what Commissioner Gao says he may wish to do or may have to do. On the resident, that's the main focus, and the resident seems to have more of an interest to be given input at a Thursday night meeting. So, we just happen to pick three of them, because we normally, well, we used to have two, and then we'd have a workshop. That doesn't mean, it doesn't hold any water from the standpoint of saying, well, that's the way we have to go, but we, I'm just looking at it and saying, well, how could we go forward? What makes the best sense? And if we had three meetings, and we had a workshop in one of them, we also have a clause in here that says, by the way, that standalone workshops are held on a, as needed. So we could have a standalone if we needed, but then we violate the part for the commission. So, if it's the will of the, of the commission to wait until a new mayor comes in, well, then I'll go along with that, I mean, I'll smile. I think this was a good idea last year, I think it's a good idea this year. And the real focus is on, and the real focus is on the input from our residents and from our stakeholders. And I see very few of them on any given Tuesday morning for any reason. And if we had a, if we had a, a meeting that started on a Thursday, that was focused really on a workshop, and we started at 6:00, same time we always start, I think, I think we could be effective that way, and it'd be one night that we may be here from, for an hour or two, just on the workshop side of it. So, I'll, I'm flexible about it, I'm just looking at what I thought was the best for, for our residents, those who have elected us, and then the elected folks who were, want to make sure that we have an opportunity for everyone to serve, if they so wish. I think this is a little cumbersome for that. Thank you, that's, that's it.
Just to wrap up, I, again, when we, when we made this new schedule, whenever it was, five years ago, these were all the same discussions, which is why we said, if we're going to do a Tuesday morning meeting, because our meetings are so long, they need to be things that are not generally commented on. They're the day-to-day operational, going to fix a drain, and, you know, these are not the things that cause a lot of, and we painstakingly went through to the kind of things. So, I think, yes, there is a, there is a argument to be made, we don't see a lot of residents here on a Tuesday, because they might be working. I will also say, I think there's not a lot of residents here, because these are not the issues of interest, which is why we do them on a Tuesday morning. So, anyway, is everybody okay with just waiting for the new commission next year to make these changes, but continue to ask Jennifer and her team to balance out the meetings?
Well, I'm fine with that, I do think, again, Jennifer, you've heard all the discussion. So I just think, again, Thursday night's primary, Thursday night's when, you know, people are going to more likely come and comment. So I think with that kind of new face of intensity, so to speak, you know, I think just try to manage the agendas as well as you guys can. And then I think we, we have a responsibility, if we see something on a Tuesday we think ought to be on a Thursday, then we ought to say so. So I think we just kind of work with that, and then-
And that's, and that's what we're doing, we're looking at those agendas and pre-approving them.
I mean, I'm okay with waiting, I mean, truthfully, like, yeah, I mean, I would probably go historically back, right? I would probably, you know, make the Thursdays truly the primary meetings, and the workshop are workshop items, period, they're not action items. But, but again, I mean, I'm, I'm good with what you said.
Commissioner, you good?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so, can I get a motion on the suggested red line changes, except for the paper ballots, which we already discussed?
So moved.
Commissioner Frainey?
Second.
Commissioner Walker, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing or hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, we will get a resolution in the month of January. And then we have the commission liaison appointments, which I already started to talk about, and everybody turned in there. I sent you all an email as just a suggestion, especially for the smaller groups, it's less change, there's going to be dramatic amount of change next year, with three seats being upended. So, I was just going to suggest that we carry on, keep our positions now, and let the big change come next year, but it's certainly up to you all.
I can make a motion if you'd like.
Sure.
I make a motion that we continue on in our existing assignments, per the discussion of the changes that are going, may come about, or will come about next year.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Torga, Commissioner Walker, any other feedback on that? Everybody okay with that?
It's a good idea.
Anybody from the public wish to speak? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, Rebecca, you'll, I don't think in most of these cases you have to even send out a letter. There may be one or two, but I mean, I don't think you-
Especially when everybody's the same.
Yeah. Okay, we have the Dennean Golf Club cart leasing services, staff's recommending postponing this item until December 12th. Can I have a motion to approve that postponement?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Commissioner Gao, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then the contract of the award for Dennean Golf Club restoration, again, staff's recommending postponement until December 12th, special meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Gao and Commissioner Walker, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then the Duke Energy Underground Conversion Agreement, staff is recommending that this be postponed to January 9th work session. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Gao, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then we have the State of Florida Department of Transportation escrow agreement, construction on Skinner Boulevard. Man, that was a mouthful. Beginning postponed, a January 9th work session, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Gao, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so then we go on to our proposed agenda for January 9th, where we have a number of consent items. We have the continuance for marine advisory, we now have the Skinner and the Duke Energy that we just discussed, and there, and there is no, and then the lighting agreement, and there is no workshop item. We also have the, sorry, the proposed Thursday night meeting for January 11th, a number of presentations, the fleet replacement plan, the Highlander Park Aquatic Complex Design Proposal, which will be discussed. So those are pretty good. Okay. You all okay with the layout of those agendas? Yes, ma'am?
Excuse me, Mayor, earlier when you were speaking about the travel policy, and you were bringing, we were bringing that resolution back, did you want to add that to the agenda?
Well, I need to add, you're the one, you're the ones that said they would come back in January, I just don't see-
I just didn't set a date, but we can add those to the 11th, if you want to make that a longer, we can add both of those resolutions.
All the resolutions we need, that's enough time for you to, okay. So with the resolutions that need to come back to us, they'll come back on the 11th, so that's a pretty good layout, I think, for those two agendas. Can I have a motion to, can I go ahead and do, I'll do them separately, can I have a motion to approve January 9th?
So moved. Second.
Vice Mayor, Commissioner Gao, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And- Any opposed? Okay, and then the proposed agenda with January 11th with the, the additional resolutions that were discussed today?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Commissioner Gow, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Commission discussion. Jeffrey?
Yes, ma'am.
Dunedin Tartan update.
Indeed. Thank you all very much for entertaining this one more time. The, the purpose of bringing it back to you all is to actually ask for a resolution for continuance of, of adopting a tartan, but I at least wanted to bring you all up to date on where we are so far, so that at least you have as much knowledge as you, as you can. When we talked about it before, it was discussed that the city had not ever adopted a tartan, and so that was kind of the purpose of, of my journey. And through research since then, we've actually found out that we have adopted a tartan. And that was in 1983, we adopted the Elliott tartan, which at the time was the tartan that the city band wore, which, which made a lot of sense. In 1986, William Matthews created the Dunedin USA tartan, and it's Dunedin USA, so it's not to be confused with Dunedin, New Zealand, who has a tartan. And, so, that, the Dunedin USA tartan was actually brought forward in 1986 to challenge the Elliott. And that went on through, I believe it was four or five different commission meetings.
Yeah.
It was quite, quite a history, and if you know the characters in that discussion, you also know things that weren't said and things that might have happened.
Can you tell me some of the names? Because I'd remember, I'm sure.
Mary Hamilton, Manny Bonner. Bonner was the one that brought it forward.
Yeah. And, so, but as, as a result of all that, actually, and it was brought forward with the recommendation of the new tartan. And so, that motion failed, which meant that the Elliott stayed the official tartan of, of the city of Dunedin. The Elliott tartan is also represented in our city flag. The, the Elliott tartan is also represented in our seal. The Elliott tartan is also represented on some signage throughout the community center. And so, it actually wasn't just adopted and then just kind of put into a file. But, my thought and my desire to continue this journey anyway is because that was a decision that was made 40 years ago, at a time when the city band wore that tartan, so it had some representation outside the city of Dunedin. Some of the discussions that evolved around the Dunedin USA tartan was why it was brought forward, and the idea that a tartan represents typically a clan. And so, what does that mean for a city to adopt a clan tartan? What's that, what does that say, or what heightened awareness does it, imbalance does it create among other tartans, clans that weren't chosen to be there? And, and should it represent something on its own, right? When you, currently, if you see the Edgewater tartan, if somebody's wearing, or I'm sorry, an Elliott kilt, do you recognize that kilt as a, oh, that's a Dunedin kilt? Or is that, oh, that's an Elliott tartan, that's an Elliott kilt? And there's no really branding or tie back to the city of Dunedin anymore? And so, I just thought, I just think that those are at least worthy of discussion. And then it's, if, if we don't want to keep the Elliott tartan, then what's next? What tartans are available? It's also an opportunity within this task force, or whatever we will call it, an opportunity to acknowledge all the tartans, you know, in one location. Here, all the tartans that are at least currently used in the city of Dunedin by all the wonderful organizations that choose to adopt a tartan. It's an idea of just, to create that, that bonding and branding opportunity for all the, all of our Scottish heritage. And so, that, that's, so I'm, I'm asking that a resolution, this is coming through the city clerk's office, who's saying that we need an official resolution to, to make this happen. The verbiage on that, I'm not quite sure.
To make what happen? To create the task force?
Uh, to create the task force, to, with the recommendation to, well, for the goal of bringing back a recommendation on a tartan, whether to keep the Elliott or to move forward in making another one.
Okay, who wants to tackle that one?
Certainly the decision...
I don't want to tackle it at all. I, I think it's a, I think it's a, whatever.
It's a wonderful...
Whatever you guys want to do, I got no, no stake in the game.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
And I, and I actually, I'm going to apologize to you, because when, when I discovered that we were, that we needed to put the, I'll call it the proper flag up behind us, that flag, I saw that document then, and I forgot about that. When I just saw it recently, I should have told you about that. I, I just forgot all about it. To bring this up now, certainly could be, could be sort of explosive, but, but so, it, perhaps we ought to, perhaps we ought to have an unofficial, and just to make sure that we, this is a, this is the way we want to go. I don't know. It's in our, remember, it's in our seal, it's, it's all together. It's a whole, it's a whole piece of property that we have here in recognition. So, I mean, I don't mind, I don't mind looking at things.
Does there have to be a task force?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the task force kind of sounds like we want to make a change.
Yeah.
We now have a document that shows we have an official tartan, and nobody's giving us a reason why we should change it.
I, I, I don't know the reason. I, I don't care what they're, right? I, I was just told we can't call it a committee. What we call it, I don't, I don't care.
Well, but I'm just saying, go talk to people. Tell us what they say.
Yeah, before I was supportive, but, but now I'm just questioning. And I don't want to see you get put into a bad position.
Oh, Jeff, you're asking for a sticky wicket, ma'am. You really are. Because now...
Now there's a task force.
And I don't mean to keep interjecting in front of you guys, but now, we, I mean, the band changed their, their tartan, and somebody else owns it. And so, even, even if we, what are we going to do? Tell them we want them to represent us in whatever tartan we choose? I mean, this is just, it's, it's asking for...
I, I think that would be part of the discussion.
Well, I'll talk to somebody about that. Have fun. Just tell it.
But, but my thought is, is if you, if you make it about the tartan, it's all about the tartan. And if, and if a tartan that we choose is currently owned privately, and they're willing within a contract form, set out some stipulations, make it a business transaction. Here it is. You know? And if it's a no...
I'm running away.
Well, one of the reasons why, if I may...
No, I'm just teasing you.
I know.
You can talk to whoever you want.
One of the reasons why, why Commissioner brought up for discussion is because if there's a formal committee that's convened, then the city commission has to authorize that committee. And so, Commissioner had wanted to go talk to members of the community, but if something formal is going to happen, then it has to be authorized. Because, you know, you, you form a committee, the committee sits down, and they said, they say, either we're going to keep this tartan or we want a new one, then that's going to be on the dais as well. So, that's kind of why we're here, Commissioner?
Yes.
So, if I may, because I've all of a sudden, I, I thought I understood, but now I don't.
Now, no, now you really understand.
Now you, now you fully understand.
Now you really, because you're the newbie.
Yeah, so, I guess...
Not so much anymore.
So, two questions. Just make sure I'm, I'm clear on what it is. So, in 1986, what is deemed the, the official tartan, for whatever reason, was voted down. And, why was that? Do we know what the background was there? Oh, yes, we do. We do?
Yeah, there's a lot of background.
Okay, all right, we won't...
Who voted which way?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Okay.
Everybody, Mary Bonner, voted against the Dunedin tartan, right?
It was, it was, yeah. All votes, regardless of tartan, in 83 or 86, all votes were unanimous. Okay.
And then, I mean, even, I mean, Mary Bonner was the one that started this conversation about going to this Dunedin tartan. And, you know, once, I think once the Elliott was picked, I think they were exactly where we are right now. Not touching that with a ten-foot pole.
Okay. Well, then, the second, so, the, the high school pipe band, they've adopted their own tartan.
Yep.
Okay.
They're all different.
They're okay.
So, like, what do you choose? And then we go with something different?
Well, I, I'll just say, you know, conceptually, I, I really, I like the idea of an official tartan, but...
I do, too.
I, I, I don't know how we do that.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, well, no, no, that's, that's...
Jump in, Mo.
I'll, I'll continue to convey my... Scotch will be involved.
Stop now.
Well, the only levity I can add, it was when Commissioner Gow and I were sitting at the Dunedin Community Chorus on Sunday, they introduced the lady that created their tartan that they wear on their outfits. And it's like, I looked at Jeff like, yeah, I mean, just one more reason, like, it's, like it's Pandora's Box. It's just like, but, yeah, I, I mean, I'm okay if you want to keep having some more informal things to vet it out, but I, I don't want to open a lot of different feelings about something that obviously was clearly voted on 40 years ago, probably for the same reasons. Like, it's not worth, you know, making people, you know, feeling like they're having to fight for what they've created. You know what I mean? But I don't know, Jeff, I respect you, you know that.
Yeah.
And I love your enthusiasm. I just, I don't, also don't want to make people, you know, look and say like, what are they doing? Why is that issue important enough to... Cause heartache. To cause a lot of different feelings among different groups who have, you know, have pride, and you saw it. The lady, again, the lady introduced, a lot of pride in the tartan they've created for the Dunedin Community Chorus. So, I, I'm, I will say I'm a little bit afraid of it, you know? Oh, I'm very afraid. There's no little bit.
Even though I...
Petrified.
I, I agree with Rob. I love the idea of an official one, but...
Well, that we actually own.
We, we have an official tartan.
We do, it's the Elliott.
It's the Elliott.
It's official.
Oh, look, we got a sample. Which frankly, I, yeah, well, see, I totally disagree.
I mean, I'm wearing the Wallace.
It goes with nothing, black or white, and that's it.
Oh, it goes with black.
And red.
Do you have the other one that got voted down?
Oh, you do? I don't think I've seen that one. But see, part of the reason it got voted down is that, that, that they didn't own it either, that some guy owned it.
Okay, well, that, that to me makes sense.
See, I like that even better. But part of the reason that they voted down was that the, the guy who, whatever, McPherson or whoever, owned it. We couldn't own it, and we'd always have to buy it from him.
Well, what, what, what happened in 1986? We had the Elliott as artificial tartan. The high school wanted to adorn the auditorium with banners, and they asked the city of Dunedin to...
Provide their tartan.
To provide a tartan. And they went to do that through the local Scottish shop, and they refused to sell the city of Dunedin any tartan for that purpose, other than the Dunedin USA tartan. And that's how this all came about.
They wouldn't sell them the Elliott.
They wouldn't sell them the Elliott.
See, I mean, but again, we didn't have the internet back then. I mean, we didn't have, you know...
And that was part of the reason for the failure, was, at the time they took the vote, they couldn't confirm that the Dunedin USA tartan was officially registered, right? They couldn't, they had no documentation on that, from what I can piece together.
Yeah.
And, and everything.
Do you know what some of these informal groups think now? I mean, are they like, do they, there, does there seem to be this, hey, that sounds like a great idea, hey, let's talk?
Yeah. I'm, well, I, I, there are 19 different people. I have, I have at least part of this, this group. I'm trying to include as many stakeholders as I can, because I don't want to be accused of leaving a group out. Some of them don't really understand why they want me to be in, why they want, why I want them to be involved. Others are, sure, we can have that discussion. And certainly there are those that are already lobbying. I get people lobbying me all the time. And it's like, I, you know, it's the committee that's going to decide. And which tartan do we... Which tartan do we own?
We don't own either one.
No, we don't either. Yeah, we don't own anything.
That we voted.
This is the one that is...
The official tartan that we don't own.
That's, that's artificial tartan.
Because it's the Elliott.
Which is very, very similar to the Edgewater, which is what the city band currently wears.
Very close.
Very close.
And currently, the city band, our, our contracted pipe band director owns that. So, we couldn't even own it. Yeah, so like, if we wanted to just make a clean switch to what the band's wearing, Ian owns it. So, we're still not in control of our own destiny, is my point, no matter what we do.
But I wonder if we could be.
Well, why don't you find that out?
I think, I think that would be part of the...
Why don't you talk to Ian?
That would certainly be part of the discussion, I would think.
Talk to Ian.
Right. And we've had some conversation, but I, I don't want to get too far out, is controlling what this group...
Jeff, is the goal to have a tartan that we own that is the official city of Dunedin tartan, but then everybody still can have their own tartan?
What do you, what do you mean by everybody?
Or is it like, we create it, and then we want everybody else to use it?
I, I, my thought is, is I think it's important for the city to have an identity, to have a tartan. That was what kind of started me down this road, along with, you heard it during some of the branding sessions, well, what's, where's the Dunedin tartan? Why don't we have one? And then, then we came to find out, well, there is this Dunedin tartan. Well, there is, but we don't really own it. I have reached out to the Matthews family, because part of the question is, do they still have rights to it? Would they be willing to give up those rights and turn them over to the city so we could own it? If we, we don't own the Elliott, so if we were to choose to go from the Elliott to the Douglas, for example, no, you, you know, the city isn't at any other loss. Does it matter that we don't have access to it if it's the Edgewater, or if it's the Edgewater? But we're given rights, we don't own it, but we're given rights by the owner of the tartan, to create whatever we feel we want to create. Does that make us any, does it make us better off, worse off? I don't know. I'm just looking for consensus direction.
Okay, so how about this? Okay, I, I think, I get you.
It's up to the will of the commission.
I think that you...
The beauty is, we already have one, so...
I, I, yes, that is the beauty. I think we've all expressed some of our concern about opening up a hornet's nest, especially with this type of thing. See if you can go along with this. I think if you want to have unofficial conversations with all those people, have at it. I would tell you that I don't want, because there's no way you can explain to everybody, there will be an article, the city's looking to change their tartan, and we're going to get it. And I don't want that to happen. So, I don't want to pass a resolution to give you a task force. But I, I do want to say, I give you all the breadth in the world to go talk to people about it and see what they say. And come back and let us know. It doesn't have to be a resolution.
Is that okay?
But it's not a committee, and that was the concern when it was brought to me.
No, it's not a committee that you're going to go...
Is that he was establishing a committee?
It's not some, yeah.
And that was my concern, because that was not the consensus direction in, that was given, so that's...
I mean, I never want to stop a commissioner from talking to people about something that they feel is valuable. I just don't want the community to think that we've been talking about it because we want to make a change. When you first brought it up, we didn't even know we had a tartan. Now we know. So, man, I'm going to tell you, I don't want to touch it with a 10-foot pole, but if you, if you see some value in having a dialogue, especially talking to Ian, right? I don't want to stop you from that, but I, are you guys kind of in agreement with that thought process?
I see this as being, yeah, absolutely.
Very unofficial.
I agree with what you just said.
Yeah. I think you agree, you already said you. I mean, Jeff, if you've got a concern, go have at it. I just don't want that particular community to think it's something that we're like. I think you need to find out, is there a reason to do it? And in your pursuit of that, you talked to a group of people. You okay with that?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, I am.
And thank you for your continued support of the Scottish organizations in our community.
Just a valid reason to drink some scotch.
That's it! That's it.
Have your informal meeting with Scotch, I would suggest.
Okay, city clerks update?
I don't have anything there.
City managers update, Jennifer?
I have nothing.
Anybody have anything for the city clerk or the city manager?
I have a question for the city manager. Two questions, actually. I asked her this yesterday, I'm just keeping her on track. Online permitting, I think, was to go live today, but it's going live when?
It's going, it's going live in January.
Oh, my God.
It's actually, we've had what is the second pass of the most up-to-date information, and we're going live in January, no matter what, so.
And she told me that yesterday, and I just wanted to go on the record.
Shoot me now.
That, yeah, because, you know, a lot of people waiting for it. And my other, my other thing is, I know that staff has now reviewed, and I think you were part of that review, of the fertilizer ban resolution that the Sierra Club gave to us to review, and if it's appropriate, and it's my understanding you agree with it, it's in line with the philosophy the commission has stated before. I mean, if it is, can we get that on the agenda?
Yeah, we can do that. We have reviewed it, the fertilizer ban.
Fertilizer ban resolution that the Sierra Club did. But again, the staff reviewed it to see, is it in line with what we've all stated and feel, based on, you know, the fertilizer issues?
But is it also, is it different than what we've passed aboard? Or what we accepted from the county?
No.
No.
Well, I don't know. All I'm saying is, you guys reviewed it. If it's duplicative, fine. If it's not, I just want to move it forward. Right.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I.
So that we can communicate back to Sierra Club in one way or another.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because, yeah, I think the objective of this will be to get back to the Sierra Club in one way, shape, or form.
So, I, let me call for that. I have reviewed it with Natalie Gass, as their sustainability coordinator. I have not reviewed it with the majority of staff, and it's a simple review, and I didn't see anything extraordinary about it with Natalie, so.
Yeah, all I know is I got an email that said you guys had reviewed it, and seemed to, you know, feel ready to bring it forward in some way, but, so whatever it needs. That's why I just, that's why I brought it up during the city manager update. So, I just, again, I agree with what Commissioner Walker just said, like, we want to get back. Like, we've done this, and it's got all the factors in it, or we agree this is a better resolution, and we want to sign on, or we don't agree, whatever the answer is.
And I, the one concern I would have is changing what we currently have. If we're just making a happy-to-glad, you know, if the Sierra, whether the resolution of the Sierra Club, the draft that they provided, is consistent with what we currently have on the books, I think we just need to make sure we, you know, tee this up in the right context.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
City manager, Jennifer Brammer.
City attorney update. Anybody have anything for the city attorney? Kigok, commission comments, which are liaison appointments, liaison things, as well as events and things. So, final meeting of our current vice mayor. Vice mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Before that, I would like to make a statement. I'd like to make a statement on behalf of this entire commission. We all want online permitting as quickly as we can, and we all want it to work the way it needs to work, and that's what staff is trying to make sure that we get. So, now it will be extended until January, but we're certainly all focused on making that happen as soon as possible. Thank you. Thank you to all those who have called. Thank you.
Okay, that is?
No.
Okay.
We, I did go to the Florida League of Cities meeting this week for the committee that I'm serving on, which is the administration. And two things that came out of that so far, and whether the Florida League of Cities chooses these as priorities or not, we'll see, because they'll really limit down this year. But I just wanted everybody to know what it was, and the focus, the focus was really on making sure that we have public service recruitment and retention for our first responders, and that the state, that the state help all of us, all 411 municipalities, to make sure that we have that. We had a lot of issues about people going to different departments for different reasons, and we were hopeful that we could make sure that we continue with safety and security as a number one, or certainly an important topic for us. The other struggle that we had was on the short-term rentals, because some of us wanted that to be a number one priority. Well, we asked to have that be listed as a policy statement from us, that we have the right then to continue to cast our own net as it relates to that subject matter, because there's some, certainly municipalities, that lost that right, did not have in place statues or ordinances that protected them. So, I just want to let you know what had happened at that meeting. It was a very important meeting, I think. The president of the Florida League of Cities is in our, is on our committee, and he thought it was extremely important. So, it was a focus. We'll see how, what comes out of that. I just want to let you all know. Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Gao?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. PSTA, right, is on everybody's hearts and minds. We had our second delegation meeting, and that local bill did pass along party lines. So, the next steps for that bill is that it's going to be filed with the House of Representatives, and will be assigned three different committees, but we're not sure yet what those committees are. And then, if it passes, all those committees, it'll be sent to the House floor. If it passes the House floor, it'll be put on consent on the Senate side with all the other local bills, and unless it is pulled from there, it'll be voted on, on consent. But there's all kinds of things that can happen in between there, things that we'll be working on. As soon as I know what committees that bill has been assigned to, I will let everybody know.
Okay, just a question, Jennifer calling me.
Historically, like, unless it was a unanimous vote coming out of the local delegation, they wouldn't just approve it up in Tallahassee. Do we have reason to think that's different now?
That's more of a political question than a legal question. I don't know that there's.
Kind of our policies and legal.
No, I mean, with regard to whether or not the support that it's received from the local delegation and those, and those particular members of the legislature, and what their influence and is with the rest of the legislature in passing this.
That was very well stated. Okay. No, I just, yeah, okay.
No, I did.
Whether you agree with that philosophy, that had been the philosophy, so.
Now, this Friday, there is a Suncoast League meeting, and I have asked that the PSTA bill be part of that discussion, and maybe Jennifer Webb will give us a little more insight onto what that process looks like. So, you know, we'll know more at the end of the week, but at least wanted to bring you all up to date on the PSTA bill. I went to the Florida League Conference as well the following day, and coming through the intergovernmental, the Transportation Policy Committee meeting that I'm on, we just talked. In general, our, our statement is around, not specifically saying multimodal, but just transportation, more support for transportation infrastructure. And then, the talking points will be about multimodal and diverse transportation and things of that nature. So, that's where we are with the Florida League. High school stuff. ROTC competed in the Battle of the Bay competition, it came in third out of 20. And that allows them the opportunity to qualify for state competition, so go Navy Falcons. On the performing arts side, December 6th, the high school's chorus has a concert. December 8th, the high school band has a concert. December 12th, the middle school beginning band has a concert. December 14th, the middle school advanced band has a concert. And on the 14th, San Jose Elementary has their chorus concert, and Garrison Jones has their concert this Friday. So, there's a lot of singing this holiday season from our schools.
Are you going to all those, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
You're amazing.
Yeah, that's what I do.
You're going to the chamber party on Wednesday.
I am going to the chamber party on Wednesday.
You are?
I am.
No, all right.
Yes, I will.
That's right. Five to seven, baby.
Quite the party guy.
Quite, five to seven, so, absolutely.
Well, on my liaison, I, December 11th, this coming Monday, I will be inducted in as vice chair of Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. Woody, who's already kind of the acting chair from Largo, will be the chair. So, and I believe Renee Flowers, I think, is going to get inducted as the secretary treasurer. But anyway, proud to do that, and doing some great things on sustainability with TBRPC, so. Then with the Toronto Blue Jays, and I think Vince was here, but he left, but February 17th is tentatively the time that we're looking at for the Welcome Back Blue Jays event, 12 to 3, similar format than last year. They totally want another golf cart parade, so we're trying to figure all that out. But anyway, so that'll, that'll be a big day, so. And it could be the same day as the Hope event at the park, so, you know, we'll have to tag team a little bit. Of course, that one's longer.
Can we try and get some players at our Welcome Back event?
I can ask. Okay. And then, I did want to say, you know, I did a post on Facebook, you know, nobody does Dunedin kickoff in the holidays better. And, you know, breakfast with Santa by our Wreckin' Parks, always amazing. Dunedin Youth Guild tour of homes, and of course, we all know what the Youth Guild does for our community, and it was fantastic. The houses were fantastic, and just a lot of work by a lot of people to cover the bases. And then, of course, our boat parade, which is a partnership with Dunedin Boat Club and Dunedin Parks and Recreation, was amazing, and I thought it was, went like clockwork this year, was great. So, kudos to everybody involved. And then, and then Sunday was the Dunedin Community Chorus with their individual tartans on their outfits. And they have a new leader, Deborah Pruitt, and worthy of note, she's got an amazing background, and, and she's great, and she's enthusiastic, and so, I, you know, it was an amazing concert, wasn't it, Jeff?
It was, very, very good. Very impressive.
So, just wanted to take note of all that, so. Anyway, lots of fun. And on top of that was the teacup fundraiser by, I think I say it right, Sari and Joe.
Sari and Joe.
Pearlstein, for Dunedin Cares, and that was.
And we're going to take a picture after this.
I think we're taking a picture, yes. Anyway, that's all I had.
Yeah, so, so on the, on that fundraiser, she raised almost $700, and we're.
Seven hundred?
We're going to have an opportunity today to take a commission picture in her teacup, which steeps eight. Get it?
Yes.
And possibly get her a little bit more money for the fundraiser, so. And otherwise, that's all I have.
Do we need to bring cash for that, or?
Check later, you know, however you want to.
Okay. Okay, so we, I have stuff to sign, so.
I'm making a donation, too, so.
Okay, so are we going to say, meet there? Where, do we even know where we're going?
Oh, well.
Well, you don't want to. I don't think it's in our calendar.
I wouldn't give the address.
Not.
Okay.
Maybe we can talk about that afterwards.
Yeah, okay. Can we say 12:30?
I'm going to give you my address, and it's right across the street.
Okay, can you, can you, can we say 12:30?
Oh, yeah.
Because I still need to sign things, and.
And that gives me time to get there, and then I'm back.
Yeah, you're gone.
Yeah, because I got to be on that 12:30.
Okay, 12:30 for a teacup thing. Okay, so just a couple of things. Jennifer and I and our team have been working with Forward Pinellas on our waterborne transportation ferry. We had a meeting with them. I think I told you, we, not we, but PSTA received the grant for the ferry. Forward Pinellas has now met with Clearwater. Now we're having a group meeting between Dunedin and Clearwater. Everything is all positive at this moment. We'll let you know if it turns in a different direction. You never know. You never know when you get that many people in a room. But it's all moving along with a, with a good direction. Visiting St. Pete, Clearwater, well, both Forward Pinellas and Visiting St. Pete, Clearwater, are not having their meetings in December because it's the holidays. But both are doing a holiday luncheon, so I still have to go to something. Why they're making me do that, I don't know. Anyway, I did want to tell you that Canada is still our largest international visitor to Pinellas County, which is important to know. And there's a plan for, a lot more focused than there has been the last four years, i.e. pandemic, is going back into Canada to keep that going. So, that always ends up being good for us. Their Wednesday night is the Chamber Holiday Party from 5 to 7 at the Dunedin Fine Arts Center. The Mayor's Council Luncheon, which I think you all are going to, most of you anyway, I don't remember who RSVP'd, is Friday at 11:30 at the Salt Rock in Indian Rocks. Next weekend, we have our Old Fashioned Christmas, as you know. And I'm pretty sure Lindsay put in your calendars Bob Hackler Sr.'s Celebration of Life at Bob's house.
Andy, no hit facts.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and I didn't really, I was waiting for them to tell me what they were going to do, and they've been trying to wait until the family was back home for the holidays altogether, because some, they're all coming from different states. And so, they will all be here, so the 29th, it should be in your calendar. Again, it's a celebration of life at somebody's home, so it's not, you know, I think, if it's cold, definitely dress warm, because they're right on the water, and it is, you know. And we can always go to Mo's after. It's right up the street. I have no problem offering up your house. No, you're not. And that's about it that I have, but I also, I mean, this is our last meeting. Oh, sorry. Then never mind, I won't. Yeah, we have the special meeting next week. And that's it. Anybody have anything else for the good of the order? We'll do our holiday stuff next on the tour. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.